I'd like to call the Southboro School Committee open meeting Wednesday, March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. To order, I see that we have Jen Primack, Kim Tollender, and I see Kamali Omeley also joining and myself in attendance. It is six thirty-two. And I'll turn it over to the district for the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-three budget, which is the first item we have on the agenda.
All right. Good evening and thank you. The Southboro Public, the Southboro School Committee is committed to providing exceptional education experience for all students in a cost-effective manner. The district believes that strong partnerships with parents, the community, and the town government are essential in developing a fiscally responsible and educationally sound school budget. The school leadership team and the committee utilizes its budget priorities, the strategic objectives outlined in the district's strategic plan, Vision two thousand twenty-six, and the mission and vision of the district as guiding principles throughout the budget process to develop a budget that supports an exceptional education for all students. Copies of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three School Committee voted and approved line item budgets are available online at the central office in the Southboro Town Offices. This evening Rebecca Pellegrino, Director of Finance, will be providing a total of the FY twenty-three budget subcategories by function classification as part of the public hearing process. And I will turn it over to Rebecca Pellegrino.
Becky, before you start, I would just like to acknowledge that I do see Katura Martin had joined, actually before we before we started the discussion on this. So we are in full attendance tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ron. So I, as Greg mentioned, I will be outlining the fiscal year twenty-three budget subcommittees, and I will start with regular education. In the Function Classification Administration, which is the one thousand series, this includes school committee, superintendent's office, assistant superintendent, district-wide administration, business and finance, human resources, legal services, and administrative technology. The total for this category is six hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. The Function Classification Instruction, the two thousand series, includes salary, curriculum, and department heads, instructional technology, leadership and training, principal's office, curriculum leaders at the building level, administrative tech and support for the schools, teacher salaries, teacher specialists, instructional coordinator, substitutes, instructional assistants, librarians, media center, professional development for leadership, teachers and staff, and substitutes, textbooks, instructional materials, other instructional materials, instructional new equipment, general supplies, other instructional services, classroom instructional technology, other instructional hardware, instructional software, and guidance. And this category totals twelve million two hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. The Function Classification Pupil Services, series three thousand, includes attendance services, health services, transportation, transportation other, athletics, and student activities. This totals eight hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. Function Classification Operations and Maintenance, the four thousand series, includes custodial salaries, custodial supplies, heating, electricity, telephone, gas and gasoline, water, maintenance of grounds, buildings, and equipment, technology infrastructure maintenance and support salaries, and technology infrastructure maintenance and support other. This category totals one million nine hundred four thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. Function Classification Fixed Charges, five thousand series, this includes rentals and leases, and this is three hundred dollars. For a total regular day programs portion of the budget, which totals fifteen million six hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars, or a two-point-four-nine percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. For the special education portion of the budget, we have Function Classification Administration, one thousand series, that includes legal services and administrative technology for nineteen thousand. Function Classification Instruction, the two thousand series, supervision, subject matter coordinator, teaching, professional development, instructional technology, and psychological services. This totals five million five hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars. Function Classification Pupil Services in the three thousand series, this is health services and transportation, and this category totals five hundred eight thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars. The Function Classification Operations and Maintenance in the four thousand series, this is for maintenance of special education equipment, and this is four thousand dollars. Function Classification Fixed Charges, the five thousand series, this is for rentals and leases, and this is two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. And Function Classification Programs with Other School Districts in the nine thousand series, this includes tuition out and tuition out to collaboratives, and this is five hundred forty-one thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars. For a total special education budget of six million six hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars, or a two-point-six-one percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operational budget total is twenty-two million two hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. This represents an overall increase of five hundred forty-nine thousand nine dollars, or two-point-five-three percent. And at this time, I welcome any comments.
I know we've gone over this budget a number of times. Do any committee members have any questions or comments? Okay. I think we're good. Thank you, Rebecca. All right, I guess this concludes the, the public hearing, Greg.
Yes, that concludes the public hearing.
All right. Open it up to audience sharing or public comment, as it's now called. I do see a hand up from Mr. Lit. Tim.
Evening.
Okay, we can hear you. Good evening to you, sir.
Well, amazing. It's technology stuff. Listen, I noticed that you had MTC volunteers on the agenda. I'm glad to see that. But I've also been looking over the minutes of MTC meetings going back almost a year now, and I haven't seen the school's ex officio member showing up, and in fact, no appointment shows up. I'm kind of disappointed in that, and I hope at some point we can fix that because, you know, as you will remember from when we set up this committee, we thought it was important to have participation from the schools.
Well, I do remember that, and technology is amazing, as folks have confirmed that now they can hear me tonight versus the last few meetings. So let me just make a quick comment in response to that, to that topic, Tim, and I'll let the superintendent add. Typically, that would, what we'd like to have from the school committee is the IT on the IT person on the school committee represented as an ex officio member. You may be aware that we've gone through quite a few, quite a few changes in that area over the last six, seven, eight, nine months even. So I think that what we're, I think that I'm not going to speak for the superintendent, but I think that there's at least the discussion that once, once we have the new person getting his feet on the ground, that we'll look to move forward on that. So that would be my response. Greg, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, so thank you. It is important for there to be a school liaison member on the MTC committee, and we are committed to that. Mr. Ryan O'Leary began his role as a Director of Information Technology a few months ago, and I've had preliminary conversations around him joining the MTC. And hopefully in the next few weeks, he can be appointed and join the work.
That'd be great. And, you know, my standing offer, no matter how many people go through this particular door, is, is open in terms of trying to orient him and, and help him along.
Well, your question was, was timely, Tim, and since we're, since we're likely going to appoint someone to fill the vacancy that the school committee is responsible for appointing tonight. You know, hopefully, your offer to either one of the gentleman that gets appointed will be standing for them also.
It does indeed. Just send them my way, and I'll be more than happy to do my usual work on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking. I don't see any of their hands up, so we'll move on to new business, and I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
Sure, as the school committee recalls, the town select board voted to establish a nearing, nearie elementary school building committee. And as part of its establishment identified members to serve on that committee, and we need two school committees to serve on that building committee. And hopefully we'll have names tonight to give to the select board to officially appoint at its next meeting. So we will need some volunteers.
All right. Looking for, looking for two volunteers. Katura.
Um, so I would like to be on it if, if possible. Happy to do it.
All right. That's great, by the way. Would anyone else like to join Katura on the committee?
Can you clarify what the time, what, how much time commitment is expected?
Yeah, so I can provide some updates. So a week ago, the public schools of Southboro, the town of Southboro, learned that it was invited into MSBA's eligibility phase of its program, which is basically a two-hundred-and-seventy-day time window. And basically, that window begins on August first. I believe the town anticipates establishing this school building committee sooner. And I would imagine a minimum of monthly meetings is the, the commitment, but I would imagine as the pace picks up in terms of the work that's required, it could be more than one meeting a month.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be much time required for, for a little while, based on my understanding of the schedule. But then I think that, I think that's a pretty accurate, I think that's a pretty accurate estimate. How do you feel about that, Jen?
I guess it depends if, if meetings are scheduled outside of the workday, I could do that if, if there's flexibility. I work full-time too, so.
I think a lot of folks probably have that situation. Greg, do you have a feel for that?
So I think that a lot depends on the establishment of the committee at the select board meeting next week. And I think Mr. Purple will be setting its first meeting, and I'm sure that will be a topic of discussion around when people can meet and what the best time is. But I, I agree, I do imagine that the meetings will take place not during work hours as a result of the membership of the committee.
Yeah, I think that that's a, I think that that's at least a very, very high percentage. You know, those meetings would take place outside of that.
Yes, I'm happy to volunteer then.
All right, that's terrific. So I think that what we need to do is, do we need to vote on this, or do we need to just put forward Katura and Jen's names to the selectments because they do the appointing? Is that correct?
It is correct. I, I don't think it would hurt to vote just to approve the two nominees.
All right, that's probably good hygiene. So I would entertain a motion to nominate Katura Martin and Jennifer Primack as the Southboro School Committee's appointees to the Nearie School Building Committee to be presented to the selectmen for the, for their official appointment. I, I'd accept a so moved to that.
So moved by Kim.
Is there a second?
Second, Kamali.
All right, it's a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. Okay, are we moving on to update from the principals, Mr. Superintendent? Okay.
Yes. Why don't we begin with Mr. Hershak this evening?
Thank you, Greg. So it seems like we, it was only a month ago since I gave a quick update. I do want to share that our Kindness Week celebration continued after I reported out. We hosted a balloonogram, and where students were able to send a note of kindness affixed to a heart balloon. We sold out within a day or so with two hundred balloons, and we had to scramble to get a other, another hundred carnations at the last minute for students to celebrate this effort. A big thank you goes out to my administrative assistants, Darlene Scorselli and Nancy Langway, who really, you know, shouldered a lot of this work. I do want to share that the transition to the lift of the mask mandate has gone very well. Students and staff have adjusted accordingly. I really think schools are really just a reflection of general society as a whole. Students and teachers are making choices that they feel most comfortable with. You know, I think the very first day I was, the number of students coming in, I would say roughly about thirty percent of the students were masked, but I think they adjusted throughout the course of the day. Sometimes I find students will have a mask on in the morning and not in the afternoon, so I think they're making choices that they feel most comfortable with for them and their family. We have supported students in this process, and really, at the core, the message is really just respecting students and family choices. Another step in the process is that we have made the decision to return to our traditional cafeteria seating, starting March twenty-second. We are just, this is really due in part from a logistical standpoint. The twenty-first of March, we have a professional development day. This will give our custodial's team sufficient time to move some furniture around and make some adjustments. This is really going to be exciting for students, you know. Since, you know, the last year and a half, students have been in the cafeteria either six feet apart or three feet apart, facing in the same direction. That, we don't have a traditional recess in the middle school, so the lunch is such a critical piece for their social development. Students are very excited, but in preparation for this, we're really going to develop an orientation for the cafeteria as if it was the opening day of school, because realistically, only our eighth graders have been in the traditional cafeteria seat, seating in the cap, in, in our, in our building. Some other happenings at Trotter, we, our volleyball club is back, and this is going to lead to our volleyball marathon. This is one of the milestones at Trotter that none of our students have participated in, so we're very excited about that. This is SOS's biggest fundraiser. Students have the opportunity to leave class, play volleyball all day long. We host students after school to continue to play volleyball. It's a great fundraiser, but more importantly, it's a great community event. It gives an opportunity for eighth graders to play volleyball with sixth graders, faculty members play, and, you know, typically, we have, you know, about fifty percent, you know, we have about fifty percent of our students stay after school, so we're looking forward to that. Tomorrow night, we are hosting our Night of Song. This is a great showcase of our select chorus. It's one of my favorite concerts because students get to choose their own song which they want to perform. You can hear anything from Carole King to Taylor Swift and everything in between. So if you don't have anything going on, come by tomorrow night for a Night of Song. Our UNS, UNH Jazz Festival, Festival will take place. We have about, Mr. Clark is taking roughly twenty-five musicians to UNH this weekend for a jazz competition, and they're very excited about that. Annie Junior rehearsals have begun as well. It's great to see our drama program back in, back on the stage. Unfortunately, this year, our Peter Pan production had a, didn't, could not do a live performance, but we had to have a video performance. So we are excited about bringing a live performance back, and I believe Nearie is going to come up for a dress rehearsal at some point. Some academic happenings for Trotter. We had nearly fifty eighth graders participate in the NAEP testing this year. This is the nation's report card. They were assessed in either reading or math. I just want to publicly thank parents and students who participated in this. It's an important data point for how Massachusetts schools are doing, and this information is shared with the Department of Education. Our eighth grade teachers are currently working with Algonquin Regional High School, High School for the course selection process. The high school has done a wonderful job in communicating with us and providing timely information to teachers and families. Our eighth grade socialized classes continue their civics act, action projects. One project, project that is taking place is checking the water quality at Trotter and advocating for more water stations. So Mr. Martino and Mrs. Pellegrino just realized that democracy does come with a price sometimes. So coming out of the vacation, I think collectively, many of our students and families had watched the, the Russian invasion of Ukraine. And so when students returned to school on Monday, their curiosity was at an all-time high. Our teachers did a wonderful job addressing this issue, either with impromptu, through impromptu questions or discussions, or having planned lessons. You know, our students watch this unfold either on the daily news or what we learn via TikTok. One of the things that we did see in this discussion is our teachers really highlighted some stories of resistance and heroism. I think, you know, stories of hope during this time are just as important as understanding the history and the geopolitical dynamics at play. So lastly, and I don't want to steal the thunder for a future presentation tonight, but our ELA department met with Megan Kelty to review the Dibbles Assessment. This is a literary, a literacy assessment. It's a one-minute assessment to measure the fluency of our students, and this is in, in order to make predictions about their reading levels and comprehension levels down the road. So our ELA department's very excited with this work. They have begun working with our ELA staff to start doing this, the, the Dibbles Assessment, to, you know, identify potential struggling readers. So that's our latest updates from Trotter.
Any questions for Principal Hershak?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, back to you, Greg.
So we have a Principal Valente with a Nearie update.
Oh. Before Principal Valente starts, Gary mentioned that one of the things he noticed with the middle school students, that they actually made decisions throughout the day sometimes, for those students that were actually exercising the choice on masks, that some students would wear a mask some of the day and not, not other parts of the day. I am curious as we, as we hear the presentations from the elementary school principals, since those kids are younger. But I am curious if they see at all that, that same dynamic or, or not so much, just as, as we proceed through that. Anyway, sorry, Kathleen.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's a good segue into how I'm going to begin our mask optional rollout, and staff and students' decisions are similar to what Principal Hershak shared. So we're seeing students sometimes wearing, sometimes wearing them all the time, choosing to use them in certain situations, and same with teachers. We're all putting our masks on whenever we go into the health office, so I think we're, we're seeing the same percentages as well. And teachers are still doing their best to get outside to have snack and, and keep some of the practices going that we had prior to this rollout. We too will be moving to tables in the dining room on March twenty-first. In preparation, we'll be reviewing our Nearie Behavior Matrix and reviewing the expectations of what this, what this will look like in the dining, because it's going to be a big difference. We'll have our tables. This will be the removal of the desks. But it will also be the breakdown of our drive-in theater, so that we can go back to some normalcy in the dining room. And this movement also allows us to access our science lab and begin to, to utilize all of the materials and resources in there for our hands-on activities, so we're looking forward to that. Some work in connection to Goal One from our SIP Plan Empowering Learners, and in connection to the, one of the district's themes last month, Black History Month, Grade Five created banners. And embedding DLCS standards into them, each student selected a person to research. They selected one quote that they felt best represented this person. In addition to that, they needed to find a picture and list at least five to six important pieces of information that will help their classmates to learn more about their person. And then they presented those to their classmates. They also each chose two hashtags or created two hashtags that fit the person that they selected. Currently, March Madness is alive and well in Grade Five classrooms. They're moving through their brackets. Students created book talks. Again, DLCS standards were embedded into these lessons, and they are sharing them out and competing against each other in their bracket. So it's been very exciting in Grade Five. For Goal Two, Equity of Opportunity, we had a visit this week at Nearie, or last week at Nearie, Anawan Whedon, who is a member of the Mashpee, Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe located on Cape Cod. He grew up on the Narragansett Reservation in South Coastal Rhode Island, and he was instructed on traditional dance and costumes of New England natives throughout his entire life. And now, when he came, he presented to our Nearie fourth graders on his cultural knowledge, and he brought many items from the Native American culture and introduced them to storytelling. And each of the students were able to create a corn husk doll, which is a tradition that's taught to Native Americans. And his goal, his purpose is to share his cultural knowledge while engaging others in cultural preservation for future generations of better understanding. In connection to this goal as well, as a staff, we completed our whole staff book study this week. We've got this by Cornelius Minor, and this week it was, we focused on chapter five and six. And small group discussions focused on using the Universal Design for Learning Framework to make learning accessible for all, and really asking ourselves, how do we bring this all back into the classroom with a shared responsibility and ownership by all stakeholders? In connection to Goal Three, which is Healthy and Balanced Learners, Jennifer Lipton O'Connor joined us at our staff meeting on Monday to show the new SEL inventory. We received training from her. Two staff that, that had been selected to practice using the screener shared their experience, and then all teachers will, will receive access to the screener moving forward. Our Kindness Week last month consisted of making cards for seniors. We had multiple spirit days. We wore a kindness bracelets from our three sixty-five Z partnership. And then this month, on March twenty-eighth, we're going to be partnering with three sixty-five Z to make a difference with small X of kindness that make a big difference in many people's lives. And we are starting the Kindness is Always First Step project, which is a sneaker collection of new and gently used. And we will be donating them to students that And we will be donating them to students that don't have access to, to new sneakers or gently used sneakers. In, in communities surrounding us. In connection to our new monthly themes, women in history. So during academic extension, Mr. Lang and Mrs. Wagner taught lessons. Over the past week about, one was Ruth Bader Ginsburg and equal rights. And they also taught a lesson about Roberta Bobby Gibb, who is the first woman to run the Boston Marathon. And how she, like RBG, broke down the barriers that were placing, that were in place discriminating against women runners. And also Ford, in recognition of disability awareness month. Mr. Lang and Mrs. Wagner also shared with me that they recently started a new unit using the book Just Ask. Be Different, Be Brave, Be You by Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor. And it's about learning differences. Autism and speech, ADHD, dyslexia, allergies, physical impairments. And they will be building off this book to help students to create projects into, aligned to the themes within the book. I liked one of the quotes from the book is each of us grows in our own way. So if you are curious about other kids, just ask. And next Monday, we'll begin to engage in MCAS training with our IT team. With a whole school infrastructure trial on Friday. And next, and as Principal Hershak mentioned, we'll be traveling to Trotter for their dress rehearsal. And then after two year hiatus, we're looking forward as principals to begin to plan for. What our incoming grade four parent orientation can look like, step of day and a sixth grade visit to Trotter. So that's all for Neri.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen. Any. Any committee members have any questions for Kathleen? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Well, back to you, Greg.
Share some happenings at Finn School.
Thank you, Greg. I'd like to start by thanking the Finn School staff for all their work. In preparing our students for the lifting of the masking requirement. Teachers and staff prepared our students by having many in class discussions about the change. I'd also like to thank parents for helping to support this work. Our students came into school and Roger to speak to your, your question. Really. Aware of this change. And the, the nuances of their, this new. Ability was, was just startling with preschool classes. We had probably two or three with maybe one or two masks. We had gray kindergarten classrooms where there were three or four students wearing masks. Similar, similarly in grade one. Students did take off and put on their masks throughout the day, as did staff. There were some questions about masks that continued to be addressed throughout the day. Brown, if someone's coughing. So I think there's still going to be a lot of work for us to do, but. Overall, it's just a joy to see our students smiling faces. And the way that they look at us now is completely different than how they did when we had masks. It's, it's like an awakening in many respects. So we're just thrilled, we're in a very good space for our youngest learners. Over the past. I'm sorry, Roger.
That's great to hear. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, no, that, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're in a very good space right now. And students are being very supportive to one another too, which is a focal point of our discussions previously. Over the past few weeks, we had Finn staff sign up for self-directed SEL course. Through a company that the district has worked with in the past named Panorama. These courses are self-directed and staff will be learning about SEL. Aspects such as the adult capacity for SEL and how it can be, how that can lead to improved outcomes for students. And for themselves in terms of longevity and burnout prevention. As well as something that was mentioned previously by Kathleen. The assessment of SEL competencies within students and staff. We too at the Finn School had the luxury, had the pleasure of having Dr. Lipton O'Connor meet with Finn's staff. Yesterday, or I think it actually was this morning. To review the SEL screener that the district is adopting, the SADR sabers. We have two classroom teachers that are piloting this. Over the next couple of weeks and Jennifer did a great job with her training and her overview. And we're excited to use this data as we're thinking about placement in the next, next couple of months. Friday is SEL day. Each classroom in our school will be showcasing acts of kindness in the theme of respect. I read the book, I Promise to our school. Emphasizing the need for everyone to make promises to themselves first and foremost. Before they start making promises to others. We're also continuing our food pantry drive. And we're really excited about a new addition to something in our morning announcements. I don't know if you remember, but our morning announcements are recorded, pre-recorded. We have students and staff. Speaking about different things. I introduced something called a mindful moment. So over the course of the next couple of weeks, we'll be having different mindful moments. The one that I did for students and staff was around deep breathing. And how that can actually help keep people, keep you calm and relax your body. So next up, we're thinking of something on the lines of guided imagery. In preschool, students are learning about rainbows, the weather, the color wheel and the letter of the week is the letter V. In kindergarten and grade one, students are learning about narrative writing. In using story webs to help them brainstorm about their experiences in their personal choices that they can use. To integrate in their writing. In math, students are working on adding in, in adding by groups of ten. And in science, students are learning about the sun and moon. And as mentioned by Principal Valente, last week we celebrated Read Across America. With promoting different genres and themes each day. One day was reading for everyone, celebrating your favorite books, celebrating your favorite food. Reading can be relaxing. And the most important one is that we're all a community of, of readers. And just a final plug, our single SOS fundraiser, our Dance Fit. Event is kicking off next week. So I'll be sending out information to parents in the community about that.
All right. Clayton, you, you mentioned recorded announcements. I, I thought I might have heard a rumor that you had. Recorded some singing announcements. There's no, there's no substance to that rumor, is there?
Um, no, there is. We do a lot of singing. We've, I sing the Finn School song. We, we, we do what we need to do, Roger, to get the job done. If it's singing, if it's dancing, we do it.
That's great, actually. Do any. Any other committee members have any questions? I see Jen stand up.
I have a, I guess, a two part question first for Mr. Ryan. What's the lunch situation, Finn? Are you also doing the same changes?
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, we are scheduled to do the transition back to our roundtables. On March twenty first. And with that, as mentioned by the other principals. We will be doing some previewing and some practicing for our students. Because all they've known has been the, the single desks in the cafeteria.
And I guess then my follow up question might be a question for medical advisory. Or I guess is, do we, has, has that been a recommendation? You know, because we removed masks now. I know in the past, there was potentially concern around the lunch situation being a place where there might have been spread. So is this, are we, is, is medical advisory now recommending that we change back to what we had before because of lower rates in the community? Or what's the rationale for switching?
I can take, I can take this one for you, Clay, unless you want to. No, I think, but, so the rationale with changing is that, as you heard, about twenty percent of the students are masking. And it's intermittent masking that's happening. So there's, they eat lunch with their classmates. So there's really no added risk at lunch because they're already unmasked throughout the day. So I think if we, you know, we'll have. Two, three weeks worth of data with the masks removed when this takes place. And then there's really no added risk with, at lunch than there is in the classroom unmasked.
Can I just add one thing? We are having desks set aside in the cafeteria for those students that prefer to eat away from a large group. We'll probably have about ten, I think we planned for.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, the medical advisory team continues to meet every Tuesday. So as we. Get closer to that March twenty first, they will continue to examine the data and make sure that, you know, it's still the right decision as we look ahead to the next few weeks.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Principal Ryan. Is it professional development next on the agenda?
Roger, I was hoping we could ask Mr. Ryan to do a solo with the full song. But I, for time sake, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, maybe next meeting.
Yeah, we, we can put that on agenda for the next meeting.
Yes. So, yes, so this evening, Dr. Ryan Horn will provide an update on the work. Preparing for our March twenty first professional development day. And Dr. Ryan Horn has been working all year long on this, this day. And it's been a tremendous amount of work and. Excited to have her share the plans for the day.
All right. Thank you very much. So first, before I dive into sharing specifics. I wanted to just take a minute to thank the professional development committee, which has representatives from all of the schools. And the administrative team and also thank, you know, the principals and central office who have all been very involved in this planning. It is a, it takes a lot of time to be prepared for. Having everyone engaged in professional development throughout the district and particularly for the district professional development day. Where we have offerings that are, we want them to be aligned to vision twenty twenty six and our school improvement plans. But we also want the element of choice. And we want our educators as professionals to be able to think about, you know, where they are looking to grow and what. You know, it might be that they have things they need to do towards their certification. Or it might be that they have things that they're particularly interested in. So finding that balance of alignment and choice. We have two basic formats that the sessions fall under. They are either workshops, which is when we have a presenter. It might be an external presenter, which we do have several people that we have, that are going to be coming in and presenting workshops. Or we have internal presenters, so some of our own educators who have offered to share their expertise. And in some cases, these are central office people, but in other cases, they're educators from the schools. The other format is partnerships and partnerships are not a presentation. As much as they are a collaboration that is furthering educators learning. So it's when a, it might be a pair, it might be a group of educators coming together. With a focus still aligned to our district work. And it is still proposed and approved by the professional development committee, just like the workshops are. And then that is the focus of their day as well. So what I'd like to do is just not give you, there are a lot of different offerings that are going to be happening throughout the district. So I want to give you a sense of the types of offering and highlight some of the, some sampling of what will be going on. In the area of empowering learners. One of our outside presenters is going to be presenting on the topic of universal design for learning. Which you heard Principal Valente talking about in her principal's report. And this is a framework that supports inclusivity and making sure that. All learners have access to the experiences in our classroom. The area of mathematics, our middle school teachers, many, I, I believe almost all of our middle school math teachers. Will be involved in the process of looking at curriculum resources, which you'll hear more about in our mathematics presentation after this. Digital literacy and computer science standards, there's groups of teachers who are working on that with Julie Doyle. And a representative from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Who is going to be joining them for part of the day. We have Dot Lucci who will be presenting. Who is an outside presenter, but also is someone who has worked with our district over time. And so knows our district well, but brings her expertise. And she'll be working with executive functioning with our teachers and focusing on secondary. In this, well, fifth grade and up actually. So there might be some fifth grade teachers involved as well. We also have Megan Kelty and the team of reading teachers leading. Work related to early literacy instructional practices. That connects with the work they've been doing all year long, furthering that. And in the area of world language, there are new frameworks that came out late last school year. And so this is an opportunity for our world language teachers to come together. And dig deeper into those new frameworks and look at the implications. And also an opportunity for vertical alignment and talking across the schools. In the area of equity of opportunity. Another one of our outside presenters is the Anti-Defamation League, who's been working with us throughout the year on the World of Difference Program. Will be doing a workshop transformative approaches to social and racial justice in our schools. And this is again focused on secondary educators. And it's really about, it's sort of the next level of work after the foundational. Work that ADL has done with all of our secondary schools. Three of our educators who have been leading courses on the work of Saretta Hammond. That is about culturally responsive teaching and the brain. Are going to be doing another workshop that again takes that work to the next level. Or it can be an entry point for people who are interested, but have not yet taken the course that they have offered. There is, there are a lot of educators who have developed partnerships to continue the work. Of revising curriculum units in relation to the windows and mirrors work that we've done using rubrics and tools. To look at our existing curriculum and curriculum resources and say, how do we. Revise, first analyze, but then decide on places where we might monowake revisions. That's true in ELA, in many of our specials, specialists, music, art, library and other disciplines. See, we have a workshop on inclusion supports in the general education classroom being provided by some of our special educators. We have a series of workshops for our educational support professionals called ESP Classroom Essentials. There's going to be work done with the digital assessment tools that were adopted. In the school psychologists will be working with that and continuing that work. And we have some of our. Educators who are going to be focusing in on Orton Gillingham practices and developing and expanding our work in that area, which is in another area of ongoing focus. In the area of healthy and balanced learners, we have an outside presenter, Dr. Chris Willard, who will be presenting. Mindful resilience and the post traumatic growth beyond the COVID crisis. And he is a local psychologist who will be coming in and working with our educators in that area. Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is going to be providing mental health first aid and mental health one oh one. Mary Ellen Duggan will be leading our nurses in professional and development related to their work in health and wellness. We have several different groups that are doing work to continue their learning related to the castle competencies and how, how that applies. and how, how that applies to their daily work. And one particular aspect of the SEL work is our, some of our counselors, particularly at the middle school level, coming together and looking at alignment of practices both to the SEL frameworks and to the Department of Education and to each other. Our occupational therapists are coming together to work together, our speech and language pathologists are coming together to work together in reviewing and aligning their practices. And some of our special educators are leading a workshop for educators who work with students with severe special needs, and that will include educators from elementary, middle and high school, which is a really nice opportunity also for vertical alignment in that work. So that is a sampling of what we have planned. And I am happy to answer questions.
Say, a very impressive sampling.
I mean, that's a, that's a pretty healthy sampling, so.
You don't say that's a five percent sample.
No, it's not a five percent sample. It's a, it's a majority sample. I clumped some things together that are actually like multiple sessions and things like that.
All right, Kamali.
I agree, the sampling is robust. And so that kind of ties to my question, which was how many of the opportunities do you think that an educator would be able to participate in or, or take advantage of?
So great, great question, Kamali. So the way we structured the day, because it does get incredibly complex with this many educators in so many locations, is that they are selecting one of those things for the whole day. So, and, and they all proposed and had the opportunity to propose workshops and partnerships. So they participate in sort of building the day and then they have choices within it. But it is a day-long experience. And then many of them, again, are continuing work that already exists. And then there will be ways that we will say, and now if this is something we want to make sure more people get, what are the opportunities for that?
And is there a, something that you already have planned where some of the presenters or the people providing these lessons, they're going to have materials or references? If, you know, will we, will you kind of inform the, the educators? Like, hey, if you are interested in these, but you weren't able to attend for this day because you preferred something else, you can go here and, and do some kind of self-learning? Or will you wait for it to be the reverse, which is someone reach out to you and say, I didn't get to go? Could you give me that person's contact and, and the materials?
And so there's a couple of different things happening in that area. One is that the PD committee has collaboratively worked together to create a feedback form that we will ask all educators to complete in the last ten minutes of the day. And in that forum, there's the opportunity to express their feedback on the, uh, the range of, of choices that they had, but also to say what would they hope for in future PD? What would they like more of? What would they like in addition? So that will be one way people can communicate with us. In addition, the PD committee is trying something new with this district PD day, which I, there might be people in the audience who haven't even heard this yet because we're still communicating this out. But we are going to have a sort of Google slide deck where each workshop or partnership will have one slide that has just big highlights, links to resources that they think are worth sharing and a contact person, so that if someone wanted to reach out and say, I'd love to hear more about that, who might they reach out to? Maybe a couple of pictures if they choose to do that. And so it's a very light touch on a way to give people a little glimpse into what else was going on and ways they might connect and network around those things. So it'll be our first time doing it this way, and we're still kind of working to prepare that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You sound pretty excited about that, Stephanie, as far as that.
I am. Yeah, it was an idea that one of the teachers on the PD committee, I, I posed the question of how could we share across them? And it was an idea from one of the teachers on the PD committee and something that they do with students as a way to share across. And they said, I don't think this would be that hard to do. Let's try it. So we're trying it. We'll, you know, we'll see how that goes.
Sounds really interesting. Kim?
Stephanie, I love that idea. And this is a lot of just really great work. And I wanted to ask, as a reminder, how many, how many staff do you have participate in this? Staff, like teachers plus ESPs, like what's the breakdown?
So it is, so I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but we have about six hundred and I want to say about six hundred and forty that are currently signed up for sessions. There's the chance there's a few duplicates because occasionally people sign up for two and then we haven't deleted them. But I don't have the exact breakdown, but that's the most recent number that I've seen.
Um, and you, um, do you have sort of a feeling of like what the hot topics are? Like a handful of the hot topics? Are they here?
They're, they're here. I mean, I can tell you some of the biggest ones in terms of just like bigger attendance. I mean, one that is in the, actually on here is some of our phys ed teachers are doing yoga and mindfulness and how they can incorporate yoga into phys ed. That was, that was a popular offering. A lot of people are going to mindful resilience. That is our biggest offering with about, I mean, across all three districts about between eighty and ninety people. And then Universal Design for Learning is, has a pretty big crowd. ADL has, is a, is a fairly sizable group. And then if you put, like, there are, like, windows and mirrors is an example where there are a lot of different groups doing that work. So if you pulled that together, it's a lot of people, but they're working at a lot of different places. I'm sure, I'm doing this off the top of my head, so I'm sure I'm missing some others, but really, people are, I think, really excited. I know the PD committee and central office is feeling really excited about the things we were able to put forward. There's also another one that's not on here is about writing IEPs. I mean, there's really a wide range of options for people.
Great work. Thank you.
Katara?
Thank you. So that looks amazing. I, it's really looked so quality and the range of topics is incredible. I, I'm wondering if, so I'm trying to remember what the previous PD dates were like. I don't, it wasn't set, could you just take a minute and just compare and contrast? Like how P used to be and how this is, you know, different from that, so that we can fully appreciate, I think, how, how, how amazing this is. And then I'm just wondering, um, how, what it's going to look like going forward? Like, is this what P days will be like all the time going forward? Or is this sort of the March special, or how are we thinking about all that?
It's a good question, and I'll probably need Greg to chime in on this a little bit because he has more of the historical perspective. You know, I think it's ever-evolving, and I think that there are so many competing commitments when it comes to supporting the professional learning, that as we get one thing right, like, so we might be getting the breadth of opportunities right. Then there's the sort of, you know, desire to make sure that we get everyone or large numbers of people to have some of the same experiences. So those are like competing goals. And so I think that the PD keeps evolving as we, at different times, need to lean more towards one way or the other. There are times in the past I've been told where there would be two days that were connected. So you signed up for something and it met once in the fall, once in, in the spring on the same topic. And there are ways that people really like that to go deeper into something, but then that, you know, has its pros and cons. So I, I think it's a little hard to say where it might go. Greg could probably say a little bit more about where we're coming from. I've mostly been experiencing this in COVID, so I think it's probably not totally typical.
Yeah, so I can add a few, add to that detail, Stephanie. So in the past, we have five professional development days built into the calendar. Two have been district professional development days. And as Stephanie mentioned, it's planned by the Assistant Superintendent in concert with the Professional Development Committee. And it has always centered around workshops and partnerships. I think the real work that Stephanie has done with the committee this year is really making sure that there's alignment to our strategic objectives, that the professional development moves us forward in helping us achieve those objectives. So I think Stephanie and the PD committee and educators have done a real nice job centering PD that's going to help move our work forward.
And, and I'll just add one more thing that I think is a little different that people have commented to me is with the help of, of a lot of different educators with the Student Support Services Department, Marie and her team and other educators. One of the groups that we were really working hard to have some good options for was our educational support professionals. And, and, and our, and our educators who have more sort of unique roles and making sure that we really, they were still aligned, but we were really giving them what they need. And I think we have some really great offerings in that respect. So that's, that's something that has been very challenging at times. And we not always come through for our educational support professionals. So we're hoping that there's, that they're excited for some of these offerings.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Katara.
I, I just wanted to say, I think this is wonderful. You've done a great, you've all done a great job putting this together and the selection looks great. I kind of wish that I had that for my own continuing education credits. I did, it would be great if we could hear a summary afterwards of how it went too and what educators thought. To, and I just want to also, another point, I think it's really interesting that resilience and mindfulness is, was pretty high up there. And I think it's great that we're able to offer teachers, which clear, and staff, clearly something that's pretty needed given the stress of everything that they've had to deal with over the past several years. So, but it's great. It's, it's really exciting to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
So did you have something to add?
Yes, I just want to, again, thank Stephanie, the Professional Development Committee and all the hard work and planning this day. You know, we do have approximately eight hundred employees in our district and planning. A comprehensive professional development day is no small task. And it does take a year-long planning effort. So I think the team has done an excellent job. And I'll just comment on that professional learning is such an important part of the work we do, day in and day out. Our own professional learning, the learning of our, of our educators. These professional development days is just one component of a much larger, comprehensive professional development plan from how principals are using time with faculty meeting, collaborative time, graduate courses and so forth. So I think it's really important to emphasize that professional learning is part, an important part of the work we do as leaders and as educators. And just want to thank Stephanie and the team.
Thank you. And I, and I want to just add one more thank you, which is to the many educators who are in the role of presenters. Just because they are in a way foregoing the opportunity of going to a session in order to support the learning of their colleagues. And we're really lucky to have, not only have the expertise within the district, but also the willingness to, um, to play that part, both in the partnerships and the workshops. So thank you very much to all, to our many facilitators who are making this happen.
Here, here to that, and to them. All right. Next up is mathematics and English language art update, arts update.
Sure. So I'll start and then turn it back over to Dr. Ryan Horn. So the committee knows that part of the conversations that the district has been having over the past year and a half is really about building capacity, specifically building capacity with our teaching and learning team. As a result of that work and setting a vision moving forward, we have added some capacity. So this evening you'll be hearing from some of our members of the teaching and learning team. So this year, we've added two members to the team. First, I just want to acknowledge Kathy Lozot, who's not a new member. She's been the mathematics coordinator in the district for several years and has done amazing work. In addition to Kathy Lozot, we've acted, we've added Dr. Mary Coakley, who has joined Kathy in the work around promoting mathematics instruction across our pre-K to A district. And lastly, we welcomed this July, Megan Kelty. Megan Kelty is the English Language Arts Coordinator, and she supports principals, educators, and aligning and building coherence around English language arts. And I just have to compliment the three. They've done an amazing job thus far, and it feels like they've been here for years, not months. So I think it's a testament to the work they're doing. So at this point in time, I will turn it over to Dr. Einhorn for an introduction, and then we can begin the show.
All right, I am going to share my screen. Are you all ready for that? And I'm gonna, I don't have anything else to say. I'm just going to turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for hosting us this evening. As Greg said, I'm Kathy Lozot. I'm one of the math coordinators here. Tonight, I will be presenting the elementary math updates. And my colleague, Dr. Mary Coakley, will present the element, I'm sorry, the middle school math update. And Megan Kelty gets to do both the elementary ELA and the middle school ELA to wrap up the presentation. So tonight, we're going to focus on two areas of the district's strategic plan, which include empowering learners. And we're going to share how we are working with teachers to develop high-quality instructional practices for not only within our schools but across schools. And we're going to focus on equity of opportunity, how we're using and collecting student data, and how we're identifying and addressing students' needs and what that looks like in the classroom. So I will begin with elementary math. There's a picture of some of our unmasked cuties there. All right. So in terms of collecting and using student data, we are rolling out some new resources, and Megan will add on to this piece. So in order to look at new assessments for our assessment toolbox, we focused in mathematics just on grades three through five. And Megan will talk about how her focus was from kindergarten to second grade. So for grades three through five, we have a new screener and diagnostic assessment for all students. And it is part of our invasions program, so it aligns well with our curriculum resource that we are using. We are focusing on common topic assessments for grades K to five. So that's something that we had before, but in relation to the strategic plan, it's across districts now. So it's not only within our teams, within our buildings, but it's across North Borough and South Borough. So we have this common expectation of what students are able to know and do at the end of our units of study. And that now goes across both districts. And we are refining the way we, oops, sorry, one more back, but I can talk to it. We are refining the way we collect that data. So teachers have always collected the data, and we've always had some sort of assessment grid that we've used. But we've refined it this year so that it looks the same across grade levels and again, across schools and across districts. And that includes, for mathematics, it includes topic assessment data, in fact, fluency assessment data. Now we can switch. Thanks. And in terms of high-quality instructional practices, in our PLC work that we're continuing, it's looking at that data, and then how do we use that data to create instructional action plans? And what we mean by that is simply, we know what students' strengths are and we know areas going into a unit that they may need some extra support and making our instructional plan for that to happen. And we're using our curriculum resources, but each week I do put out what we call a monthly, I'm sorry, weekly math share. That's where we're just reviewing the resources that over the years we have shared with teachers, not just within invasions, but additional good resources that we have. So the teachers have a bank of resources to use as they're making these instructional plans. And then lastly, for our grade five students, we have online tutoring that's taking place at Neri School. So we have a number of students that are coming before school that using this data that we are collecting, in addition to MCAS data, we've identified certain students that are able to participate and it's individualized tutoring. So they go online, but they're able to have a one on one tutor online. So it's very individualized instruction for that students' learning needs. And lastly, coming up, we have, sorry, we have, there we go. Our math leadership team is beginning a curriculum review process. We have invisions for one more year. Our contract will be up next summer, in the summer of 2023. So what we are looking at is do we need to renew our contract for invisions resources? Or do we adopt a new curriculum product? And the reason we are just looking at those two options is when we renewed our contract and upgraded from invisions 2016 to 2020, there have been a number of new curriculums that have come that have been developed that are like invisions. They are strong in ed reports and Curate and Desi recommends them. So our current program falls into that category already. And what we're looking to do is just make sure is it meeting the needs for our, all of our students and our teachers. And then if not, what are some other programs that might be there? So we're looking into that, but we have a full year process in which to do that. Do we want to stop here for questions, Stephanie, or do we want to go through? What would be best?
And I think that's up to Roger. Roger, would you like to?
Well, I don't see hands up at the moment, so feel free to continue.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I'm really proud to share our work in mathematics for grades six through eight with you tonight. Our work began in the fall with conversations first among principals where we engaged in some instructional walkthroughs and then debriefed with one another to to discuss what we were seeing. And then some of the some of the look fours for principals as they spent time in the classrooms so that they had a good sense of maybe what should look different in the math content area and how to guide teachers in those ways productively. Then what we did was we met with our math curriculum leaders and we engaged in a conversation about our current resources, our materials, our instruction. And then we, in those conversations, we've identified that there is a need to explore high quality materials. And what's very, I guess, reaffirming is that there are a lot of high quality materials out there. And so we've had a lot of opportunities with the leaders to explore those programs. And identify which of those would meet the needs of our district. And you'll notice here that we really focused it on three things that we thought we wanted from a new resource. The first one, we, the the complexity of the mathematics classroom has always been challenging, but but we've noticed that there's such a variety of needs in the classroom. And and we're experiencing a greater need to have a resource that will give us those things at our fingertips. Right now, teachers might need to grab from other resources out there. And now that we have come across resources that will provide more of that within the same, we feel like we need to move in that direction. We were also more aware that we need to become more equitable and consistent with our experiences across the two districts and within our schools. So teachers were doing a really nice job with sharing their materials, building their own resources to use. But what was happening was they'd have to kind of go look and search for things. And there might have been some inconsistencies across classrooms. And we just wanted to to deliver a more consistent program for all of our students. And then the third one, which I touched on a little bit, but we want teachers to have things that are of high quality that they're not having to spend an inordinate amount of time looking for things, but actually looking at the materials and seeing how they could implement those in the classrooms with their students. So again, we started the process. We're fully engaged in that process, which I'll explain on the next slide. But before I move on to that, we also are offering online math tutoring, grade six through eight across the district. Our funding came from the Esser grant. And what's different about this type of tutoring is we're selling it to students and faculty members as really confidence builders for kids. We're noticing that kids do have some gaps in their instruction, but more importantly, because they haven't spent as much time maybe in other years because of the gaps from COVID. They're now, they're having gaps that are not consistent across the board. So kids are able to get one to one tutoring that is specific to them, but also to make them feel more comfortable in the mathematics. So as they go on to the next grade, they just feel better about their own foundation. And so far, it's going very well. The tutors from the program get ranked at the end of each of their sessions. And students are really integral in that that process. And and we look forward to perhaps move using these this opportunity again in the future, which is very exciting. All right, the next slide. So the next slide, sometimes it it hasn't gone through, and I think this may have been just a glitch in the program, but is a timeline. So just so that you know, on Wednesday, February 16th, the math leaders, Dr. Reinhardt and myself, we went through an actual review, a mini review where we took 10 resources and pared it down to four resources with the additional current resource that teachers are using right now, the big ideas. And we really vetted what we thought to be really high quality materials. It it made for a lot of really important conversation among the leaders about what was working for teachers currently and then what was also working for students. And maybe some of the areas that we felt like a resource was make would make us even better at delivering our instruction. And so the leaders were very involved in that process. The next step, we just had our March curriculum leader meeting. And we gathered more input from these leaders about the process moving forward, what teachers might need in order to really be able to look at these resources with the lens of selecting a resource that they would be using moving forward. And then as Dr. Reinhardt mentioned, on March 21st, we will spend the entire day doing a deeper dive with those four resources and allowing, we've actually invited the vendors in to give us a very quick synopsis about what the platform looks like, but also what their vision is for mathematics and what they almost to paint a picture of what it would look like utilizing their resources in our classrooms. And then the next steps are, we'd really like to get a more firm timeline. Our goal is to select a resource to be used next fall by the end of this year. With the hope that we would also have a professional development plan that we would, we would implement in the fall to support teachers as they are experiencing the new materials. And you know, at this point, we know our timeline is pretty tight. But we do want to utilize this, you know, this momentum that we've built up and a shared thinking among our our leaders that we do need to move forward. So it's a very exciting time. Does anyone have any questions for me about middle school math?
Looking. Katura.
Thank you so much for this. This is great. I had a couple of questions. So I guess one of the things that you know, I think we're all thinking about these days and you did mention it a bit, which is identifying gaps that might be due to sort of different learning structure that's happened in the last couple of years. So I'm just wondering what what we're seeing in that respect. Are we seeing much of that? How are we identifying the gaps? And you know, how do we have any sense of how long it's going to take to kind of get back on track and sort of make up for those, you know, this weird time we've been through. And I guess I'm just thinking about that aspect of things. If you had anything else to say about that.
Yes. So right now, we're, we've identified about 32 students to participate in the tutoring program. I think we're not seeing extensive gaps per se. What we're seeing is kind of a smattering of gaps. And because kids had different experiences during COVID, they might have deficits that they're working on, but we're not seeing like across the board that you know, kids have an area that they have lost track on. We are seeing that we've had high risk kids in the past where they've need extra support. We're not seeing it to be that much more different this year. I think teachers have handled the gap building really well. And they've had to focus a little bit more on what the the precursive skills are in order to get to the on grade level content. And that seems to be going very well. And and so I think now we just have to solidify as we move forward. That's why we're hoping we'll be able to continue with the with the tutoring program moving forward.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions from any committee members? Kamali.
Just a comment, like it was good to see on each of the pages. Like where the Esser grant was being applied or will be applied going forward. So I just wanted to say, thanks for noting that. And then throughout the presentations, we talk about kind of new materials or updating resources. Not me personally, but someone may hear that and automatically see dollar signs. What would you say about that in terms of? Maybe this is not a question for you, but what would you say in terms of what our approach is in terms of? Yes, we're identifying these needs and noting them, but you know, this next stage of potential costs, you know, where you stand with that or who and and how we will handle that.
So I can jump in on this one. You know, I think it's twofold. One is that we're always budgeting for the resources. Sometimes resources come and Becky might have some thoughts on this as well. Sometimes they come in waves. Meaning that sometimes you're paying for resources and then there's a few years where you have less financial demand on that in one area versus another, but we're always planning ahead for that. We're always looking at when our current subscriptions and what are we anticipating that we're going to need? So that is is part of our budgeting conversations. That would be the first piece. And the second piece would be that we're also always looking at grant opportunities and looking to see what are the ways that we can take advantage of grants to support any of these shifts. And there are the Department of Education is using Esser funds at their level to help support these type of efforts. So that's another thing that we're you know, would be part of the equation as well.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. What's Kim?
Roger, can I? Sorry, I'm slow to the uptake. I have a question about the math tutoring as far as like just thinking like if we were thinking about doing it again. We want to do it again. Are we sort of, do we have a sort of like a baseline to see like, you know, like whatever our goal is for these students that we're achieving it or it's just the fact that it happens or just speak to that a little bit.
Great question. I'll jump in and then Mary, if you have other thoughts. So I first I will just say we're early in the process. Okay, so we're we start, the middle school started right after February break. Neri started right before February break. So we're early in the process and I would say, you know, it's it's a very new approach for us. So we're working through the kinks and we're figuring figuring it all out and we'll see. The measurement piece, one of the pieces, one of the approaches that was appealing to us is that all of our students started off by taking an assessment at their first day with the online tutoring. And then the individual educational plan for that student was based on their assessment results. So it identified topics. And then they will have ongoing assessments in order to monitor progress. So we will have some data that will be through the tutoring. But then we also use data to select students. So we looked at MCAS scores. We looked at topic assessments. We looked at fluency data. So we had and teacher recommendations. So we also can go back to that data to say, what are we seeing in terms of how these students are doing in their classwork and the assessments in the classroom and all of those places as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good, Kim. Yeah, this is really a good presentation. I'll go back to you, Stephanie.
And then we have one more. Megan Kelty will now step up to speak about elementary and middle school ELA.
Thank you, Mary. Hi, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to provide an update on all of the happenings in the area of ELA in South Borough since September. Here are a couple of pictures of ELA classrooms in action. And some updates in terms of equity of opportunity in South Borough. This year, we have been doing a lot with collecting literacy data and looking at the assessments that we're giving students and and working with the data that we're giving them. So in terms of literacy screeners, screeners are assessments that help us predict risk and help us identify who might need a little extra boost with literacy instruction or something a little bit more targeted. So we have piloted at the preschool this year, a screener called Pelly. And I was actually at Finn last week doing some scoring calibration with a couple of the preschool teachers. And it's a real robust early literacy screener that is really engaging and authentic. It takes about 15 minutes per student. The students really enjoyed it. And it just gives us a lot of information about their early literacy skills. So that is in place in the preschool this year. We have also brought in the Dibbles eighth literacy screener in grades K and one at Finn and in grade two at Woodward. And that is assessing foundational literacy skills such as letter naming, being able to work with sounds, being able to blend letter sounds into words, being able to read real words from a list and being able to read from a story at the higher levels, not at kindergarten level for reading a story. And so following this screening, the screeners, what we did throughout South Borough is we gathered as as teams and looked at the data together and had conversations to talk about how we could best support students with their early literacy development. So that's an update from ready for the next slide. There we go. So in terms of instructional practices, this has also been a very busy year. We have implemented the Hagerty phonemic awareness curriculum in pre K kindergarten and first grade. And the feedback on that has been that students are really engaged. They're making a lot of gains with their ability to work with sounds. And I should just quickly note phonemic awareness is our ability to recognize that spoken language can go all the way down to the sound level. And it's our ability to work with sounds, to switch out sounds that we hear. And it's an important foundational skill for later reading development. So I actually know someone on the call, Mr. Clayton Ryan was even at one point called to step in to lead one of to lead one of these lessons. And he had said that students were able to sort of guide the principal, you know, guide him through, um, the lesson. So students are really into this new curriculum, which is wonderful to hear. We've also implemented the Project Read Phonics curriculum, which has been in place in South Borough in the past. We kind of did a reboot this year with some new training and new materials. Um, and that is in grades K through three. And the other, um, instructional practice that we've really, um, been focusing on this, this year is using data to inform our interventions with students. So those students who do need a little extra boost, we're using our screening data and other literacy data to really give them, um, an extra boost that's really focused on what they need so that we can measure their growth that way. So I think we're ready for the next slide. So elementary ELA upcoming, uh, we're going to continue to collect, um, student learning data. And beginning this fall, we will be expanding the Dibbles Early Literacy Screener through grade five. So we will expand it to grade three at Woodward and through Neri to collect that screening data on all students through grade five. We're also, uh, continuing to look at our assessments that we currently have and develop and, and kind of refine our assessment toolbox for pre-K through five. And similar to the math, uh, what we will be doing is launching a review of our curricular resources and our instructional resources, um, in the areas of reading and writing. And we'll begin that this coming fall. So those are upcoming ELA for elementary. And, and yeah, let's just go straight into middle school and then I can take questions. Does that sound good? So this is a picture from, from Trotter. So middle school ELA. One exciting thing that's happening at the middle school level is we had started a trial, um, of the Dibbles Eighth Screener at Trotter. Gary earlier on tonight mentioned, he gave a little preview of this. Um, and it's true. Uh, today, actually, I was at Trotter, um, working with a couple of the ELA teachers there. And we were, um, starting the Dibbles Eighth Screener and, um, with, with a small group of students. And we will continue that with Trotter students, um, through the spring, um, with sixth and seventh graders. Uh, we also have done a lot of work at the middle school level with, um, continuing our analysis of culturally responsive resources. And also collaboration between, um, Trotter and Melican Middle Schools. We have already had joint ELA department meetings. And there's another meeting scheduled for later this month to just have that time to connect between schools and discuss curriculum and, and just instructional practices. Those are the updates. And upcoming at the middle school for ELA, we will continue the Dibbles Eighth Literacy Screener this coming fall at the middle school level. And we will also, um, be developing our intervention, our assessment, um, toolbox for the middle school, continue our work with culturally proficient resources and continue our collaboration between Trotter and Melican. So there's a lot, there's a lot happening in the area of assessment and data collection and, um, looking at instructional resources and collaboration. So. So any questions about ELA at the elementary or middle school level?
Kim?
Thank you, Megan. I just have a quick question about, um, fall two thousand twenty-two Dibbles in the middle school. Will that be for all students?
Yes, the idea is that we would have it, um, it for all students beginning in the fall.
Right. Perfect. Thanks.
Sure.
Katora?
Thank, thank you for that. That was great. Um, I, I guess I have two questions. So just for, you know, somebody outside the educator realm, what did the assess, what's the Dibbles Eight screening look like? Is it, you know, for younger kids, is it having them read out loud to, you know, how does, what is that, what does the assessment look like? And then, um, I had another question and now I'm blanking on it. So maybe I'll just start with that and hopefully the second one will come back to me.
Sounds good. Um, it is getting late, so it's easy to forget questions. So the Dibbles Eight Screener, uh, there's a range of subtests from kindergarten all through grade eight. Some of them are the same and some of them are not. So in kindergarten and first grade, we have early literacy assessments such as letter naming fluency, where students are given a sheet of letters and asked to name the letters in either upper or lowercase. Uh, we have phoneme segmentation fluency, which is when we give students a spoken word and ask them to tell us all the sounds they hear in the word. We have, uh, word reading fluency where they're given a list of real words and they read from that list. We also have something called nonsense word fluency, which is where we give students, um, a nonsense word. And then they're, they're using sound symbol relationships to blend those letter sounds together, basically using phonics skills. Um, and also starting in grade one, we have students read from a story, a passage. And I should say that in the screening approach through Dibbles Eighth, all of these measures are timed measures. So students spend about a minute on each of these measures. So it's giving us a sense of their accuracy with these tasks and also with their, with their automaticity. And beginning in grade two, all the way through grade eight, there's also something called a closed assessment where they're given a story that has some missing words and they have to choose the word that makes the most sense in the context of the passage using, using context and using vocabulary and background knowledge. Um, so that's sort of, um, an, oh, a very quick snapshot of the, um, of the screening tools.
Okay, that's helpful. That's, that's all I was wondering. Um, and so my other question came back, which is similar to my question about math, which is, you know, are we seeing effects from a different learning structure over the last couple of years? And, um, if so, how are we managing that?
Yeah, I can, I'll answer the, the, uh, second part of that. How are we managing that? Um, I would say what we're doing as a district is we're really looking carefully at the data and we're using, we're using the information on student growth. And we're, we're targeting their instruction based on what they need, um, what the data are telling us they need. Um, in terms of, are we seeing, um, different data patterns following COVID? I might actually refer that to Stephanie or Greg, just given that I came on board the district in July. So I don't have that longitudinal experience with the, with the data, um, to really compare. So I don't know, Stephanie, if you want to take that one or, um, Greg, but I'm not see, I don't think we're seeing glaring, similar to math. I don't think we're seeing glaring differences in the literacy.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say what I know and the principals may have insights as well, but, um, you know, I think there were places where our MCAS scores maybe looked a little different than some of the years past, particularly in terms of growth and things like that. But that's, was true statewide and, um, it's hard to interpret. The tests were also different. In terms of our internal assessments, I know that some of the principals have commented that there were definitely places where we seem to be sort of on par with past assessments. And then there are, you know, spots where we see, um, gaps. So I, I don't think it's a sort of, um, shocking across the board. You know, people are really worried. I think it's more targeted than the, one nice thing in terms of ELA is that the nature of the work, you can keep going after those skills. And I know that this is true, especially like as you get to the older grades, like you're reading and you're writing and you're practicing those skills year after year. So, you know, we, I think that's something that's working for us in terms of, in addition to the interventions, our daily work is, is focused on that. Greg, do you want to jump in there?
We spoke a lot about the screeners and assessing students and understanding where students are currently. And I think that is integral in terms of identifying what the current needs are moving forward. Our students continue to perform well on NCAS. I think, um, in third grade, there were, uh, some of the top performers in the state. But again, I think our approach has been doing a lot of assessment, understanding where our kids are, what they need and providing them with just-in-time interventions. And that has been our strategy. And I, I would just echo Stephanie and Megan, you know, we, we don't see consistent needs across all of our students. We're seeing pockets of needs and we're trying to, uh, provide interventions. And, and I know, um, Dr. Koclu just has, um, a few insights to share as well.
So from the principal perspective, I know what has really helped this year is Megan's work with our PLC groups, with teachers. They have developed, um, just a greater ability to look at our student needs and to utilize programs such as Hagerty, um, as well as Project Read to really be skill-focused. Our teachers have really worked hard and tirelessly to develop the, the competencies of doing that with students. And it really, we are seeing tremendous, um, differences in where students started the year and, and the gains that they're making.
And if I may add, just in terms of the elementary mathematics, um, so given the screener that we gave for grades three to five, uh, there was a cutoff score. And based on the cutoff score, if a student scored below the cutoff, the idea was that you were to give the previous grade level diagnostic. And the screener was really measuring, um, readiness for grade level content. All of South Borough students made the cutoff. So that is a true testament, I think, to our teachers, you know, and the way they were able to handle the hybrid learning last year until we were able to get back full group. And it's a testament to our remote teachers and the hard work they did last year that the students came in with that foundational knowledge, ready to, um, go into grade level work. And then the diagnostic was able to give us that information as to where were the strengths? And then where were some areas that students would need support going into their unit lesson? So I think, um, you know, again, are there pockets of things? Yes. But overall, I think, um, the students are continuing to, to perform really well.
This is really wonderful work. Kamali?
Agreed, Roger. And there's a lot of data that, um, gets generated from all of this. One question I had is, um, whether the student support services, um, like Marie Allen's and herself or and her team, are they included in like the conversations or the meetings where you're looking at the resulting data and, you know, and you could speak to like, you know, maybe that helps you to understand where different pockets of, um, groups, uh, students are and.
Yeah, I, I can answer that initially, Maria, and then if you want to add on to that. So in our data conversations, there certainly have been, uh, teachers from the student support department there. Um, and I, I would just like to emphasize that the Dibbles screener that I referred to is a screening tool. So it's not a diagnostic tool. So a diagnostic tool lets us look a little bit deeper into a student's learning profile, whether it's literacy or math. But the screening tool just is predicting risk. So it, it really just gives us an indicator that we need to look a little bit closer. Sort of like if we take someone's temperature and there's a little bit of a fever, we're going to look a little bit more into what might be causing the fever as, as a comparison. Uh, Marie, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Yes, uh, so, so that whole process, we're basically providing, uh, it's definitely feedback. But, uh, i- in the process, we also are doing some interventions in the general ed classroom to address some of those pieces that we're seeing that we might want to delve into a little bit further. If those interventions are not as successful as we'd like them to be, then we're talking about an evaluation for special education services possibly. So the student is again brought up to our child studies team and discussed at length and steps are taken. And that's when we get even more involved. But Megan's been very involved with our department. She just recently did a wonderful presentation to our team about all of these screening tools and what she's doing with our reading specialists. And that was very helpful to our staff.
Excellent, excellent. I think this, um, my last comment is maybe to Stephanie, um, and I forget who else is a part of the research group for, or the test looking at our website, um, improvement. Like this sounds like the tools and the processes that are mentioned tonight, the practices that are being put in place, you know, not in as much detail, but it just sounds like something that, we should highlight in terms of these are things that our district utilizes.
Yeah, um, I don't think there was necessarily a question there, but yes.
Yes, it's a comment. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, Greg and I have talked about this recently about the, you know, uh, how do we encapsulate of this, all of this great work and communicate it? And, um, in digestible ways. So yes and yes.
Kim?
Double ditto on that. I think this is just like, this is the kind of information that, um, like the average parent may not ever like, think, even think about. And I think it's just, um, I think you should just share it a little bit more so that you sort of get the kudos for all of this work, right? I mean, you're getting, we're getting the kudos, but a little bit more. Um, I have two questions. One, um, for Kathleen, can you repeat again what you said about the, um, the, um, the assessments that you did to see if students were ready for grade level content and everybody passed the cutoff? What, was that all elementary grades?
Just grades three to five this year.
Three to five, okay.
We only did that in the upper grades.
I think that's really super interesting, right? Like to, um, to go through COVID and then to like be that all of our kids were ready to like move on. I think that's, um, really a testament to, like you said, all of, um, the good work that has been done. And then my other question, I think, is for Megan, but maybe for everybody. Um, and Marie, like, so we do the assessments, we find the kids that are at risk. And then, um, we do the interventions. And who, is it sort of like a mix of who does the interventions? Or Marie, is it somebody on your team? Or is it a combination with general ed?
So we wouldn't get involved at that point. I think Megan's talking more about the screening tools. And then the screening tools will give us information about a student that may require additional support. And those additional supports are more like our tier one and tier two interventions in the classroom. And then, uh, there's a period of time where, you know, sometimes it's a six to eight week intervention and then it's addressed again. And then, uh, if there's a need for further, uh, information because the student is doing, is not doing as well as we had expected, that's when the special ed team does get involved.
Okay, so, but you're sort of in the loop from like the screener on. So you know, like,
Well, yes, because.
For lack of a better term, like what the pipeline looks like, right? Like we may be, maybe sort of working with these kids later on. Okay.
But we're also an integral part of that child studies team too. So we are getting that information on a regular basis.
Okay. Right. Once they, once they get through, once they're sort of like labeled, not labeled, like once they go through that screener, sort of get, they get flagged out of the screener. You become part of that team. Okay.
Yes. The CST, the Child Studies Team, where kids are brought up that might need some additional support.
I just, uh, I just want to jump in and Megan might want to say something about just that there's a way in which I, I, I want us to also think about the way in which like the assessment is really part of the general education process, right? Um, the assessments are a way for us to, in very specific ways, know what individual, how individual children are doing. And so even when Dibbles might flag something for us, you know, like a child is struggling with, um, letter identification, for example, the classroom teacher may be the first person who's.
That's what I was kind of trying to get to. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I don't know if Megan wants to say a little bit more about that, but it's, it, it is informing the day-to-day, what is happening in the classroom and a whole level of support that is, um, often, what it need, what we need is a few weeks of really focused intervention on something. And then, um, as we progress monitor, we see, wow, that students made a lot of progress there. Um, and we see what their next, um, area of growth might be. But I don't know, Megan, if you can say that much more eloquently than I can.
I know, I, I, I don't have much to add. I think the idea is that these screeners help us identify students that we need to look a little bit more into just through the general education and through assessments that we can use as general educators. And then we target what they need. We keep track of their growth. And we see, we usually see a lot of growth, but that's, I I would say, everything Stephanie said, I I agree with that.
And then the one part I would like to add is that when we see a student in their early elementary years. And then as they go up in in years, it gives us a good sense of their progress over time. Because with early learners, we don't also, we also don't want to not give them enough time. To to get the skills that they need. So this, this way of looking at data is helpful in that way. So if a student does show a concern, say in second or third grade, we're able to look back to see. You know, are they a start, a slow starter? Do we give them a little more time? It just gives us a little bit more knowledge about the student so that we can make decisions for them.
This is such great stuff. Thank you, guys.
It is great stuff is, does anyone else have any questions? Stephanie or Greg, do you want to comment on anything as a summary comment? I see Greg.
So just a couple of comments. The first is that behind all the work of Megan, Mary. Stephanie and Kathy are principals and educators. It's really a team effort. Educators are the ones who are implementing a lot of these programs and these screeners and diagnostics. And they've been outstanding. So I just want to acknowledge our educators. And also, I just want to also acknowledge, you know, Stephanie and the teaching and learning team. So this evening, you heard from Megan, Kathy and Mary, who are components of our larger teaching and learning team. And our teaching and learning team also consists of Jennifer Lipton O'Connor, who is a director of SEL. And Mary Ellen Duggan, who you all know very well, Rhonda Webb and Marie Allen. So as we're trying to build capacity. And Julie Doyle, thank you. And Stephanie, we're trying to build capacity, but we're also trying to build coherence. In student experience. So I think tonight is just an example of the team's leadership and hard work. Moving, moving the work forward.
Kim.
I just want to make one more comment. Greg, like, you have really, like, this team has really been built since COVID, right? More or less. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that is like, like, just to sit back and think about that, right? Like during this pandemic, when like everything is in chaos, like this beautiful work has sort of like. Come from nowhere, right? And not nowhere, but like it's, it's, it's just really great, I think. So kudos to you. I think that we have like all these folks doing great work. But I think like the leadership and vision through this pandemic is deserving of a little extra. So, thank you.
Very much.
My philosophy is surround yourself, surround yourself with people who are much smarter than you are. And that usually works well. So we have, you know, we have a great team of people working on behalf of kids.
Hey, that's what I did and it works. So, all right, I'm going to. I'm going to move something on the agenda. The last new business item is related to the school committee's responsibility. To appoint a member to the municipal technology committee. Since the vacancy is currently a vacancy. That was held by one of the school committee appointees. And there are two gentlemen that have, that have volunteered. And they've been sitting here for a couple of hours. So I'd like to, I'd like to be considerate and and kind of move this, move this topic up. Their names are Joe Provo and Yash. And Yash, I apologize if I fail at this. Ukidavi, am I close? Well, you won't be able to tell me until you, until you have a mic. But basically, what I'd like to do is, and I just, I'll say something, this is very unusual. For us to have two people to, especially with excellent credentials. To be able to pick from, because usually we work hard to get one person. And I just want to say ahead of time that that that's the good news and that's also the bad news, because I wish we had two seats. And finally, about this, since we're only going to be able to appoint one. I really hope that the other, that the other one kind of stays involved. Because the seats on this committee, they do revolve. And there are other appointments to the committee from than just the school committee. So just having said that ahead of time, we always appreciate anybody that is volunteering their time. For these items. So I'm not sure how we will do this.
So Roger, I'll promote Yash first.
Sure, okay. You're, Yash, can you tell me how badly I did on pronouncing your last name and welcome?
Thank you all. Thank you for having me. You're considering my my request for the volunteership. And Roger, it was, you came very close. It's not wrong at all. So I will, I will take that. It's Ukidavi. It's fine. Yep.
You're too kind.
It was really good, yeah.
So what we'd like to do is, is just have you, we have, we, your information has been, was forwarded to all the school committee members. That you filled out. We'd like to just ask you to. Tell us a little about yourself, why you're interested in this, and then we'll, we'll see if any of the committee members have questions. I can tell you upfront that we are not technology experts. So, so there won't be anything too technical, I don't think, as far as the questions. But again, welcome. And where do you live?
I'm in Southborough, near the, there's Liberty Estates. Near the, near the station, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so to begin, thank you for, thank you for giving me this opportunity, you know, to just introduce myself to the committee. And, and to talk a bit about myself. I, I am actually an immigrant that I, that came to the United States, let's say fifteen years back for my education. I got, and I've been in Massachusetts since then. So I've been like here for, for fourteen odd years in that synapse, in that situation. I I have a PhD in electrical and computer engineering and I work at Intel up in Hudson. I'm a chip designer. I used to be at, if you have known about Advanced Micro Devices up in Acton. To put more closely to people, what people understand, I I was one of the chip designers on the Sony. Playstation and the Microsoft Xbox. So that that might relate out quite well. Yeah, my interest in the technology committee is that, yeah, I have a big background of high tech. As well as doing some leadership in in my day job. And if I can bring that experience as well as some requirements that the town has, as well as the school system has. And to just help out in in whatever sense it's possible for for, for the community in general. Then I would, I would really be delighted to do so. I saw that there was a volunteer position open. And I've been wanting to get involved with, with any format of, let's say, volunteerism through the. To to for the, for the town. So, and something has opened up and after two years of COVID, I think. It would be good to meet some more people to to share ideas and whatever questions if there are about technology. I I can, I can do my research. I can answer to my experiences best also. And if the, if something needs to guidance, I can do that. On top of that, I like to teach also. I teach courses at Northeastern University and at BU certain times relating to my field. Yeah. That that's more about it from.
All right. Thank you. And again, we never, we have a lot of volunteers. Positions in the city and we never seem to be able to fill them all. So this is, it's great you're willing to do this. Let me, let me open up with a, with a question. I know that one of the, and I guess it relates to. Relates to, to networking, because I know that one of the things that. We're dealing with in town is we, we have our own, we actually have our own, almost, like, I'm going to say private. Network. Is that an area that you've spent much time in? I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything like that. And and how do you feel about being able to help out in that area?
Yes, I have spent our time in the past looking at, looking at network as well as connectivity scenarios. If you would be, if you'd elaborate a bit more on what, what type of networking is, is, is actually a problem. Then I can, you know, give a very decent answer. But, but if you're talking about just communication networks in general, about chats and scenarios of that kind of situation. Yes, I have, I have looked at it in the past, but I would need to understand the current layout and the requirement. Even before I, I just spit, spill out anything to anyone, because I don't want to do that.
No, that's, that's a fair, that's fair enough. And my question's more of a general one. We, we have our own, interestingly enough, we have our own. I believe fiber that connects some of our, some of our buildings. So we don't, we're almost our own, our own network provider in some ways. But I'm by far not the best person to explain it. So I was just really asking more of a, of a general question. But that said, like I said, we are not technology experts. So it's hard for us to, it's hard for us to. I won't say, I I won't say that we have no level of technology expertise, however, so it's hard for us to, 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 you know, to. To question folks on technology. Kamali, however, your engineering background?
Oh, yeah, no, this is, I'm not going to go that route. But, Yash, thank you for volunteering for the opportunity. I just wanted to ask, you know, what is it about? So I I'm not sure if I heard this in your description of yourself, but are you, are you currently a parent of students in the district? And so that's one question. And then secondly, you know. Oftentimes, maybe some of the things that we want to do in our, you know, we know can be done in our professional environment. Doing it in the kind of civic setting and the, you know, it, things might move a little bit slower. Or they're, you know, much smaller scale. I, and kind of, how are you, are you open to dealing with? That, right? You're so well versed, having a PhD in this, in technology from Northeastern. So some of the things might see a bit more, you know, root, smaller scale for you. Are you open to, to that?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'll answer it in parts. First, first thing, no, I'm not. My, my, my kids are not at school in the system, but the, my future kids will be. So that's, that's. So if you plan a family, sure, sure. That's, that's why we are in Southborough and it's a very strong system. Coming to the second part of your question, that, yeah, things in civic scenario move a bit slow, that can, that can, problems might be rudimentary. I don't, I don't feel that's, that's something that affects me. You'll be surprised to see how slow things can move. In bigger corporations like where I work also. So. But, but I, I, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, there are, there are. If someone with an expertise or someone with certain format of experience does not come into this zone. And try, even in terms of volunteerism, try to, I mean, solve a problem, then, then I think who will? My, my, my whole and soul thing was that, okay, I, I get to do something different than my day to day, day job. Where I can actually bring in some format of knowledge and expertise I can bring through. Even if things are moving slow or fast, it does not matter. They move at their own pace, which they, which they have to. If I have to move things faster, I do have my day job to get that satisfaction out of, right? So, so I'm fine with what, what the situation is. And we'll try, in the process, important thing is, I may also learn some new things about how civic administration works. How, how, how committees communicate, what are, what is the structure in and around? So that's also a very strong and rich experience to get at this time. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Any other hands up? Okay, Yash, thank you very much. We are going to, I think, move on. And to see if we can promote Joe Provo. And I see him. Can you hear me, Joe?
Yes, indeed.
Great. Well, also thanks to you. And if you wouldn't mind, just. I, I, you know, your information also was sent to the committee. So if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little about yourself, and then we'll open it up for, for any questions the committee members might have.
Okay, I'll, I'll try not to re, you know, are you hearing me okay?
We are.
Okay, great. I'll try not to regurgitate what I put into the document there. But just at a high level, I've been in Southborough since two thousand and two. Not, not a parent. I'll just be straight up with that. Not a parent, no children in the school system. I have been a strong supporter of public education. However, in, in my personal capacity, when I got resources. Starting up an ISP in nineteen ninety-four, I did get the delegation managing responsibility for K twelve MA US. The domain name. And I've been managing that pro bono in conjunction with Department of Education since then. Acting as merely the infrastructure provider and providing a sort of trusted third party for verification. We've never really had anybody try to yank any domains, but that's just a sort of interface there. In terms of my motivation, it's. As someone who is frankly not involved in, directly in the schools, directly in churches. You know, the opportunities to help in the town sometimes are, are not as dramatic as in other areas. I've definitely come to know Freddie Gillespie and and some of the folks in some of the open space. And Conservation Commission over time and have helped out where I can there. My work is in networking and I understood that there were issues regarding networking. That were kind of front and center for the technology committee. So I thought that my experience in building and designing, building, running. Evaluating networking technologies, network designs for the last. You know, twenty seven odd years might be useful. So I just wish to help in my community. Make sure our funds are well spent and we can optimize where we can. Yes, just comment on requirements are totally on target to, to make any useful, you know, forward looking statements. We need to understand resources and requirements. Kamali's comment regarding things sometimes moving slowly. One of the other hats that I wear is actually in my second term of, second of three year terms. Operating at the internet policy level for ERA, the American Registry for Internet Numbers. And policy moves very, very slow, even when it's only national and regional, let alone internationally. So I'm, I'm accustomed to things sometimes operating at a different pace than they do in my day job. I'm sure I could say some more, but I don't want to, again, don't want to regurgitate the resume or, or topics put on the form. So if, if there are specific questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, so I think that I would have asked the same general question about. Networking, but I, I see that, I see that from the information you provided. networking, but I, I see that, I see that from the information you provided. Definitely some, some extensive experience there. I don't have any specific questions. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions?
Um, it's not a question, but I was just going to comment that maybe we could have Joe talk about that networking experience, just so others hear it. And I know we have it on his interest form, but I think it might help so that people understand kind of the two candidates that we're talking about.
Certainly.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, yeah, I I moved to Massachusetts in nineteen, oh gosh, nineteen eighty-nine. And after a stint at WPI, I left school to start up an ISP in nineteen ninety-four in Marlboro, Altranet. Built that from the ground up, responsible for all the customer facing systems, network design, so on and so forth. Equipment selection, operation, design, implementation and operations. That segue, we did acquire some other small ISPs at that time. If folks who were around might remember, that was pretty, pretty hot and heavy in the, in the internet growth time. We wound up getting acquired by the company RCN, which was a, a facilities based cable operator, who was the introducer of the whole triple play that everybody therefore followed. That was in nineteen ninety-eight. They went on an acquisition spree. I was, became responsible for all internet engineering and gathered all the square pegs, all the people that they, that the more telco and cable people didn't know how to deal with in the data space and managed a distributed national team. That ran through until about 2007, when I went to join some friends from the startup days at a small company called ITA Software, which that was more of an enterprise operation where we did a lot more data center work. I mean, we did data centers for RCN, a lot more data center work, a lot more VPNs interfacing with data suppliers that there were the backend of most bookings for airlines in the United States. And about somewhere between seventy and eighty percent of bookings there. And in the, in the European region, they had a fair footprint as well. That company got acquired by Google in 2011 and I've been working there since doing various M and A. There were a few years where we were, I was one of the two leads on the team that was managing all the acquired companies, networks, Postini, Tixvia, payment processing, so on and so forth. And the rest of my time after about four years of doing that, the, the bulk of my time now has been doing the enterprise networking in Google. So it's essentially like a, a global ISP that just has a select customer base. And with the last few years, in last three years, as a focus on security within that space.
All right. Thank you. Any other, any, any other questions? So here's how I'd like to do this. As I say, we haven't, I've gone through the process with two candidates before. I think, I think that these decisions are hard. What I'd like to do is I think find out by hands. And I'm just going to ask what the members leanings are. Kim, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I actually have just a comment before we sort of like narrow it down. I think we select one tonight, right, for our, our slots. And it looks like they have two positions expiring in twenty, in June of 2022. I'm wondering if we can sort of make the introduction to the chair of the second candidate?
Well, I can tell you that, I can tell you that, that the, the introduction, Chair's very aware. And as, as I, I think that's a very good point. I think that those other positions are coming up soon. I, I also, and I, I, I could, I guess I may ask, I, I haven't attended one of those, one of the meetings for a while. I have attended them. The meeting can be attended by others, even if, even if it's, if, if you're not a committee member. So there's all kinds of possibilities here. But that's a good question, Kim. And yes, they are coming up. Other comments or questions? All right. So what I'd like to, what I'd like to ask the committee to do is I'm just going to go alphabetically again. Just let me see a hands of folks that would lean towards Joe for this, for this appointment. All right, I'm gonna and let me see the hands of those that would lead, lean towards Yash for this appointment. Why am I missing something? And do we have?
So two and two, Roger.
Yeah.
To you, the tiebreaker.
Okay, I'm the, I'm the tiebreaker. That's
Roger, this is why you get paid the big box.
Yeah, really. It's, for me, it's close. But I guess I do lean, I do lean towards Joe. And but I also want to make sure that I ask Yash to really stay involved with this because these other spots are going to open up. So what I'll do is, we only need a motion. I, I would entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Provo as the the school committee representative to one of its, you know, one of its positions on the municipal technology committee. And I'd entertain that motion. Who'd like to make it?
I can make it. Still moved by Kim.
Still moved by Kim. Is there a second?
A second, Jen.
Second by Jen. All right, moved and seconded. Roll call votes. Jen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Katura?
I, I'm just going to make a quick comment before I vote, which is just that I, I feel like this is an embarrassment of riches. Like this is way, just two amazing candidates and it's just wonderful that we have such qualified people interested in this. So I appreciate both presentations and I'll vote yes, but I, I really do hope that, that we get the benefit of both of these volunteers' experiences in the town. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the comment and I, I couldn't have said it as well, but I, I agree with you 200%. Kamali?
Yeah, I echo that. And it also did stand out to me that one listed a different amount of time availability. And so I thought that was something that put me over the edge for where I would direct my, my vote. So for this motion, I will vote yes as well.
And I vote yes. So again, we really do have an embarrassment of riches and to have two strong candidates. Yash, I really hope, I hope you'll believe us when, when we say please, please stay involved with, with this because the other slots are going to open up and we're just, we're just one of the appointing authorities for the slots positions. All right.
Right, Roger. Could I just, I know, noticed that Tim Lit does have his hand raised. And I know that he's the founding father of the MTC. He might be able to shed some light on open positions potentially. Should we give him a second just to say thirty seconds?
Well, I'm, you realize I'm, I'm a little hurt that you identify him as the founding father because there were, there were, Sam's going to be upset too, and so am I. But sure, Tim, we'll move you in.
Okay, thanks. I, I don't mean to extend your meeting. There, there are a couple of things I wanted to, to, to point out. The first is that this is a three year term and it's important that you specify it as ending six thirty, twenty twenty-five. That's a little more than three years, but all the terms have been made to expire on six thirty. It keeps a rolling membership. In terms of what's open, the, the, the database that the town clerk maintains includes a couple of kinds of positions. What's open at the moment is the ex officio position from the school committee, but that would normally be held by your IT manager, director, whatever you, you call him, or someone like that. As far as citizen positions, this is the only one that's currently open. There is, I believe Will Warren is the other school committee appointee. His term expires six thirty. I have no reason to believe he won't, you know, ask to be reappointed, but you can obviously, you know, evaluate that when, when the time comes. And sort of lastly, just for the information of, of people, our private network is not, it, it's true that there is one. It's not the biggest issue that we're facing. I would say like most people, the biggest issues that the, the town is facing are number one, cyber and security. And the second thing that's, that's going on is there has been a push from the committee to see what things can be moved to the cloud and what things need to stay in private systems. I guess the third thing I'll point out is that the MTC doesn't impact instructional technologies. It does affect the administrative backend kinds of things and then all kinds of other things that happen in town. So I hope that's helpful both to you and, and to your appointee.
That was helpful, Tim. Thanks. So we'll make sure that when we move this forward, it does have a, it's a three year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, three years from this June. All right. Thank you for indulging me in modifying the agenda and let's go back to, I think we're back to COVID.
Mary Ellen Duggan, who has a brief update statement.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you all again. Greg has given me permission to share my screen, so. Always picked about long. So things have been going well with our start of the lifting of the mask mandate. Just to refresh, remember last time we met, Worcester County was yellow, which was a moderate risk and now we are low. So as predicted, because our case counts are low and our hospitalizations are low. So if you remember the CDC guidelines for greenware, that you would, there would not be any mask requirements unless it was a personal choice. Our positive cases this week, we had ten positive cases over the past week. So it's been pretty steady throughout the past three weeks. It dropped off and then it's been steady for the past three weeks. Our vaccine rates in Southborough have remained steady, just around eighty percent in all the schools or above. And then our daily attendance percentages is what was, we, the medical advisory team looks at, and these are the ones for Southborough for last week, which was a week after vacation. So these attendance rates are fairly good when we saw a little drop off there. There are a few days where Woodward was at the ninety-two percent and it was the first days coming back from vacation where people had extended vacations. There was a stomach bug going around also that accounted for some of the absences that week back, the first week back. And then this week so far, in the three days that were accounted for, you can see our attendance percentages are all above ninety-five percent. Our mask optional update, the average attendance rate for the week of February twenty-eighth to March fourth through all ten schools in the district was ninety-five point one percent. We were, the medical advisor team, when we met, the other day, they thought that having a one page reminder about what's going on with the mask update and what people might need to know and to need to remember was the reason for this. This will be included in the dashboard and probably in any communication that Mr. Martino sends out the rest of this week. So all the school communities, as you've heard from the principals, continue to support each individual's choice regarding masking. Our average weekly attendance rates have remained above ninety-three percent. Ninety-three percent is typically when we start to look a little bit closer at the data, when we see it hovering right around or averaging at ninety-three percent. And then the ninety-two percent was part of our policy where we would dive deeper into the reasons for the absences. So it's important to remember that to keep our schools low risk, it's essential to mask while indoors on day six to ten, after a five day isolation for a positive test. On day six to ten, after a five day quarantine for unvaccinated close contacts, and days zero to ten for vaccinated close contacts. And if you have symptoms with negative antigen testing, until your symptoms resolve. So these are times when a mask is required or recommended and it's just, it's, it's an essential part of keeping our schools low risk. And it's critical that we continue to be diligent in the following areas, monitoring for symptoms daily, staying home if we're having symptoms and contacting the school nurse, getting vaccinated if eligible to test routinely, to take advantage of our testing that we have on Mondays with our pool testing and on Thursdays with our at home antigen testing. And they can continue to practice hand hygiene. When this goes home, there are links in each of these that go deeper into that area. So really that is my whole update. It's getting shorter and shorter, which is nicer and nicer for all of, for everybody involved. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about since the last time we met last week.
I don't see any hands up. Well, I do see a hand up. Katura? Was it quick enough, Mary Ellen? Sorry.
No, so I guess so just to be clear, so it looks like, so I remember last Monday, the, the Monday coming back from vacation, there was one, if I remember it correctly, out of thirteen hundred pool tests, there was one positive case. What was, what did that look like this week? And I mean, it seems like we have not seen an uptick in cases. It seems to be due to mask, the flexible masking going into effect. Is that true? Those are my two questions.
So this week we had about the same amount of people in, in our pool screening, which was thirteen hundred. And we had four positive cases. What we're seeing is a lot of families. We're seeing then that everybody in the household is testing positive. So that's what we saw this week, which is still low. I mean, one was the lowest we've had all year last week. But other than that, it's been six or above throughout. So four is still on the lower side. But two of those people were symptomatic and two were asymptomatic. So at the time of testing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Mary Ellen. It's good news. It's good news.
Katura, I think the other part is we're still doing symptomatic testing at the schools and we did thirty of those last week and they were all negative. So the nurses.
All right, Greg, I think we're gonna move to, is there a legislative update?
No, I just
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna, let me jump back to Kamali. Kamali?
Sorry, I was just going to ask any feedback from teachers, staff, administrators on this change. The optional masking change that you The optional masking change that you've received, Mary Ellen, or that just in general, like as a summary, you want to speak to Greg?
I think I've heard really nothing but positive feedback about this from the principals, from the staff. There has been no issues whatsoever that anybody has brought to my attention when I've I've come right out and asked at the schools how things are going. And it really is like a breath of fresh air, for lack of better terms to note. I mean, like, everybody is feeling really good, is choosing to mask if they feel like the need, if they're working closely with somebody. The teachers are choosing to mask, you know, it is the optional masking really is what's going on. And it's, I think people appreciate having the choice and they feel comfortable with what they have for people who have asked for, you know, extra things, whether they have asked for a face shield, if, you know, they're working with someone or a, and or different masks that they want, we've been able to provide them so that they have that comfort level. I don't know if any of the principals have anything else to add there or Greg?
No, I think it's gone very well. I think students have been very respectful. Teachers have been outstanding in terms of creating environments where students know that, you know, they can wear masks or not wear masks and and kids have been outstanding. So it's been a success, but it's also early. So we're we're continuing to monitor the landscape.
All right. Again, legislative update. Do we really have anything?
No, but I just, if it's the will of the committee to ask the principals if they would like to begin their evenings at home and sign off the school committee meeting.
Any objections? Seeing none. I won't look a second time. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
In in terms of legislative update, the only item that I will share is I'm still waiting for a date for the day on the hill when school committees across the Commonwealth have an opportunity to meet with their legislative delegation in Boston. I've not heard what that will look like this year, but I'm assuming it's going to be in person. And as soon as I learn more information, Cheryl will communicate that out to committee members.
Great. MSBA.
Sure. So I'll go first and then turn it over to Keith. So last week on March second, Keith, Becky, and I attended the MSBA Executive Board meeting. And along with a delegation of Southborough folks from Mark Purple to members of the Select Board and School Committee. And we learned that we weren't invited into MSBA's eligibility phase of its core building program. This was a very exciting news. There were seventeen communities invited in to the phase, which was a limited number. So we're very excited. Our our phase begins August first and and on April twenty-eighth. And really, the pacing of that two hundred seventy days really is dependent on the building committee and how quickly it moves. So overall, great, a great information. And in terms of the next step, it's forming a building committee. Obviously, Katara and Jen are joining. And in terms of district members, Stephanie, Keith, Becky, Steve Mucci, and Principal Valente will be joining as well. So we're very excited. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Keith to talk about kind of an interesting twist to an SOI that we need to submit as a result. And Keith?
Yes, one interesting twist to this process, when we were, we were given the news and due to the town's interest in looking at the Woodward School for consideration when it comes to decommissioning and repurposing, that requires an additional statement of interest to be submitted at this time and prior to the deadline for the core program. So it will mirror what we did for Niri, not in as much detail as what we did for Niri last spring. But they're requesting the same type of statement of interest to be submitted on behalf of the Woodward School so that it can be considered as part of the eligibility phase. So I've worked closely with Brian Fantoni to to create that document. And if it is the will of the committee to allow the superintendent to submit that SOI, it will round out the process by which they want us to follow. So it is, you know, it's not to do any deep dives like we did with the Niri School, like the facilities, conditions assessment, but just some of the basic information to be submitted so they understand how how this would flow. And it is, is, you know, what they have requested from us as a thing to do this spring in preparation for that eligibility phase, which will begin on October first. So it is a little bit of a twist. I didn't expect to hear that. But we're happy to comply with with the work that they'd like us to do to complete the package. And then that's the, and that's what we'd like to move forward with.
Keith, I've had some questions offline on this. Is 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 the reason, and I understand, I understand that because it's being de, because at least the plan would be to decommission it. Is is there any, are there any expenses associated with decommissioning that would then become something that was reimbursable by the state? Or it it's it's just more of a, they just kind of, because it's a part of the plan, they just want to know about it. Do you have a a view on that?
I don't, I don't necessarily. I think that'd be a good, a good question. We do have a liaison now with MSBA that I could ask that question of, Greg. I don't know how, if you know anything about that angle.
So it's just more of a formality. So there's no, no additional costs to us. They just want to know kind of the comprehensive picture of the town. So when we talked about Niri, when they did a site visit, we mentioned Woodward. And they like to understand the larger context of a building product. And since we mentioned Woodward, Woodward Woodward is part of potentially a plan. But there wouldn't be any additional reimbursement from MSBA about decommissioning a school.
That makes sense. Yeah. And I certainly wouldn't expect any reimbursement for what we plan to do with the, well, what potentially would happen with the actual facility. All right. Thank you. Any other questions from any of the committee members on this? Do we need? Do we need to vote on this, Greg?
So in your package should be the motion that Keith provided us.
All right, let's.
And I can share my screen if that would be easier.
That would be helpful. I can get back to it. There's a lot of pages in that packet.
All right, just give me one minute.
I think there's. I think I, I think I show three hundred and fifty-eight pages in that packet. And I was gonna have to look at them one of the.
It's page sixteen. Page sixteen.
Can you read that, Roger?
Yeah, yeah. Let me. Let me close a couple of things and go and go full screen. And this, this is the motion that needs to be read, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I will entertain a motion that resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March ninth, two thousand twenty-two, prior to the SOI submission or Statement of Work submission closing date, the School Committee of Southborough, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March two thousand twenty-two for the Albert S. Woodward Elementary School located at twenty-eight Cordova Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massa- Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for consideration of consolidation under priority number seven. Priority number seven is the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The replacement of the antiquated Niri Elementary School will allow the Albert S. Woodward Elementary School to be decommissioned. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other finding commitment for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Southborough to filing an application for finding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So do I hear a so moved?
So moved by Kamali?
Thank you, Kamali. Do I hear a second?
A second and Kim.
Seconded by Kim. Is there any discussion on this? All right. So this is a roll call vote. Jen? Kim?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that carries unanimously also.
Thank you.
Thank you. School choice discussion. And I believe this is the discussion we need to, we'll be actually taking a position on this at the May meeting. Is that, am I correct about that? That's when we do this?
Correct. So my intention this evening is just to review school choice information, enter into a discussion at the April meeting, and then have the school committee vote in May before the June first deadline. So tonight's just presenting some information that I know that the committee is already familiar with. So let me share my screen. And I can I can without a doubt share that this will be probably the least exciting presentation of the evening. All right. So just a little bit about school choice. So it's been in existence since nineteen ninety-one, and it's governed by General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B. And basically, school choice allows a parent or guardian to enroll his or her child in a school district other than which the child lives. And then under the the general law, it's presumed that all school districts participate in school choice unless a district decides to withdraw from the school choice program. So every year, it's, you know, I think it's a discussion of the school committee whether or not it would like to withdraw from school choice. And if the school committee decides it would like to withdraw, it needs to hold a public hearing and withdraw prior to June first. So just a little bit about the funding mechanisms for school choice. So for if the district does not withdraw from school choice and we accept school choice students, we receive a school choice tuition for each student attending at five thousand dollars per student. Just as a comparison, the per pupil expenditure for the Southport Public Schools in FY twenty was nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-one cents. So there's a significant difference in what we receive from school choice and what it actually costs to educate a child in our district. And the school choice, it does allow for school committees to specify specifically which schools and grades. If any, there are seats available. So for example, you might see a decline in enrollment in a particular grade, and you could open up seats in that particular grade. So again, there is some flexibility. And then when admitting students through school choice, obviously, non-discrimination in terms of, once we open up school choice, anyone can apply and anyone can be accepted. The only time when the district gets involved in selecting students, it's when there are more more students than the number of seats available. And at that point, it is on a random basis. So it's, it's a random. And again, the selection process must take place prior to July first. And again, there's a second deadline of November first. So I think there are advantages and disadvantages of school choice. So obviously, it's revenue that a district would receive. It's a means of generating revenue. It allows for some flexibility in enrollment as we see enrollment declining at a particular grade level. And it does allow for year-to-year decision to opt out. Some of the disadvantages, FY twenty twenty per pupil expenditure is far greater than what we would receive in revenue. Acceptance is by lottery, which can be an advantage and disadvantage. Depending on the student who's accepted in his or her needs, it could take a lot of resources, more than five thousand dollars. Once a student is accepted, the student remains in the district through grade eight. So if we accept a first grader, the public schools of Southborough has a responsibility to educate that student through eighth grade. And then depending whether or not Algonquin Regional High School is a school choice district, their school choice would end, or if Algonquin was a school choice district, they could attend Algonquin. And then again, potential for a student to require significant resources. So that is some of the basic information. And for the purpose for this evening was just to get the information to the committee for a discussion at that April meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions in preparation for next meeting.
Well, the primary discussion will occur at the April meeting. I'm looking around here for. All right. So I think we'll move on. I don't see any hands up. Why don't we move on to the next agenda item, which I think we're really moving to the superintendent's report, right? Because we, we went through the MTC already. All right, all business.
So.
That's Rex. Actually, sorry about that. There's all business before the superintendent's report.
Yes. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Keith to provide an update on the before and after school program.
Great, Greg. Thank you. I do have a few things to to announce to the committee this evening. First is that the complete process of hiring our director is complete. Carrie Packard has accepted the position of Director of the Southborough Extended Day Program, starting on July one, two thousand twenty-two. We've already begin that transition process. In fact, I met with Carrie again today just to talk about the different things and different tasks that need need to be tackled. We've also been able to, immediately after her decision to join the district and us signing that that contract, we were able to launch the summer program and get a communication out to to families to register for a summer program, which will begin right after the end of the school year. She also initiated the interaction between herself and returning families, those that currently have students in the program, so that they may reserve a spot for the next, the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. And that's what we're in the middle of right now. And that will continue for the next few weeks before the available spots are made 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 known to the community for registration. So we are on a pretty good path, what we anticipated to be able to do first. And that's great. And there has been that level of interaction with families, which I know that people were waiting for. So I'm very happy to report that. The other piece that's happening behind the scenes is we're working closely with finance to develop the backbone of what we need to do to to launch the program properly. And actually, the most important part is continuing the hiring process of site coordinators and group leaders and the other corresponding staff. So we are working very closely with HR to get those posted postings going. And Carrie will be an integral part of that process as it unfolds. So I look forward to providing even greater detail and update in our, the next meeting that we have. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we are on track right now and in a pretty good position.
All right, Kim.
Yeah, thanks, Keith. I just have a couple of questions. This, launching the summer programs, is that open yet to anybody outside of current families? And will it be?
It is. And it's been, it was in every school's Thursday packet last week, the communication.
Okay. And so if they don't have a Thursday packet?
It was, it was sent out by each of the schools, each of the elementary.
Okay, so it's somewhat, okay. All right, okay. I see. And the open spots, the community, do you assume, do you think that you'll have open spots for the community?
Oh, I do. For the fall. For the fall. Yeah, I'm not sure how many there will be, but I do anticipate that there will be open, open spots available to the community as soon as we complete the returning family process.
Okay. And then I think some of the feedback that we heard in the process, some of the, in addition to a lot of the good feedback, we heard some concerns, I guess she was like the equity concerns, like making, making sure that this program is. concerns, I guess she was like the equity concerns, like making, making sure that this program is like great for all students. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to sort of like how, first of you have that feedback and second, if how you're sort of addressing that as you like create this new program.
It is really at the core of what we're going to be trying to, uh, develop and re, repurpose here. I mean, there, there is so much good that came, that, uh, Southboro extended day is developed over the years. And now with the addition of the resources that the school district has access to, we're really looking forward to that opportunity. Even the short couple of, I mean, Carrie has only been technically, uh, on, and then she actually isn't on board until July first. But even in the introductory conversations, I can tell there's a real, a level of engagement with her to, to look at that and to definitely take in the district's resources and all the work that we're doing and becoming a part of that work, which is, you know, collective. So I do, I do not see that being an obstacle. I probably can't talk at this point about specifics because, you know, we are in just that real launching phase, but I do see that as a definite, you know, opportunity where, uh, the, the district's going to have a positive influence on the experience for families and kids. So I can definitely see that as a focus going forward, Kim.
That's great. And I think like, uh, I would welcome you to sort of like keep that information sort of flowing with us about that. Um, like when you start to do the handbook and like things that sort of, you know, impact that, like, um, if you would just, you know, share it with us, that would be great. Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, I guess kind of, um, uh, I won't, I won't repeat Kim's, um, comment or question, but I, and that was so, sort of one of the things I was also interested in following, because I think it's important, uh, since it was one of the things that, uh, you know, was discussed in when we looked at this whole process of, uh, and I know you did also bringing this in-house. So I guess if, uh, when Kim says we'd like to sort of, um, follow what's going on, I'm, you know, hopefully that you'll be able to provide us some progress on that in the subsequent meetings as we move, uh, through the next few months. Does that seem fair?
It does.
Alright, uh, great. Thank you very much. And Greg, I say, see? Are you muted? You're muted. You're still muted.
Yes.
Oh, alright. Uh, well then, okay. Alright, any other questions for Keith? Alright, thank you again, Keith. Um, now we're at the superintendent's report to the committee. So we'll turn it entirely over to the superintendent.
Right, so first in your packet, um, is enrollment data. Um, so class sizes are within a class size policy I two forty, and then on March second, twenty twenty-two, Southboro's enrollment total was one thousand one hundred and forty-two students, seven more than Nez-Zeck projected, and Nez-Zeck is projecting, uh, for next year, an enrollment of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five, and RLS is, um, projecting one thousand one hundred and twenty-five. So we are right up in line with, um, RLS demographics, uh, projections. So we continue to monitor that very closely. Also in your packet is the FY twenty-two monthly general fund expenditure report and grant update, and I will have Becky provide an overview.
Hi, good evening. Um, so we are closing in on the final four months of, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Uh, and as of January twenty, we had three hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars or one point six percent remaining on the FY twenty-two budget. At the same time, last year, we had one hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars or zero point seven three percent remaining. Over the next few weeks, I will be meeting with the principals and directors to review any anticipated expenditures for the remainder of this school year. My team and I have been going through this budget line by line and have encumbered all known expenses. Couple of the areas of watch are, um, teacher and nurse substitutes, and then also heating and electricity. Um, and I welcome any questions at this time on the budget.
I don't see any hands up. Do you, I think you want a motion to approve, uh, the budget as it is today. So I will entertain a motion to approve the Southboro Public School District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two budget, monthly general fund expenditure report as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two until audited. Is there a so moved?
So moved. Katara?
So moved by Katara? Looking for a second.
Second by Kim.
Seconded by Kim. Is there any discussion on this? Alright, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I vote yes. That's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, I will share now, um, my screen for the, um, S R funding. Um, so included in your packet is the information on the S R, uh, grants. I will point out that there have been no changes in the expenditures from last month's report. Um, but just to give a quick overview, um, in S R two, we did receive, um, one hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, and to date, we have expended, um, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and have an additional, um, just over seventeen thousand encumbered. Um, and again, we have until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to expend, um, those funds. And some of the tools that, um, were talked about earlier in the evening with, with the math and the E L A, um, discussion, we did utilize some of these funds for those tools that, um, Meg, that Mary, um, Kathy and, um, Megan spoke about. Um, in terms of S R three, um, we have received two hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. And so far, we do have, um, just over ninety-five hundred dollars encumbered, and that is for the tutoring program also that they spoke about. And we have until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four to expend, um, these funds. Um, over the past month, we've continued to have internal discussions to review the grants and also to plan for future expenditures and initiatives. And that is my update on the grants, and I welcome any questions.
Kim?
Um, Becky, I have, by the way, I, this is my favorite chart. I don't know if anybody else loves it, but I love it. Um, I have a question about the tutoring, the ninety-one hundred, is that just through the end of the year or does that like go further?
That is just through the end of this school year. Um, so we will then be reevaluating and making a decision about the next school year.
Okay, thanks.
Doesn't look, uh, Kim, your hand's still up, but it, it's, it's not, not up. Alright. Okay. Greg, we're moving on. Rebecca?
Yes. Thank you, Becky. Um, so also in your packet is the FY twenty-three budget calendar. And I will note that, um, you know, from September ninth, twenty twenty-one till today, we have, uh, two important, uh, milestone meetings left. Um, so, um, Wednesday, March twenty-third, we will be presenting to Southboro Advisory. And then town meeting is scheduled for May fourth, twenty twenty-two, and that will be held at Algonquin Regional High School. So just want to thank Becky and her team for getting us to this point. Um, and we're so close to wrapping up the FY twenty-three budget process. Also in your, uh, packet is, um, the FY twenty-three school committee approved budget. And, um, also just wanted to note that, um, Becky and I did present to the Southboro Select Board, um, March first of last week and answered questions. So we're officially, um, wrapping up our budget tours and, um, were, I think, great questions and, um, and I think we're in a good, good place right now in terms of moving that FY twenty-three budget to the town meeting for a vote. Also in your packet is the, um, FY twenty-three budget book. So, um, uh, it's a, it's quite a thick read, a thick, uh, budget booklet this year. We, we included a lot of the work we did around facilities, conditions and enrollment studies. It's an excellent read. I will not tell you how the budget booklet ends though. So you have to read the very end to, to know what, how it concludes. But again, just want to thank Becky and, and Cheryl Lepry at Central Office and HR. It's a team effort getting all this data ready in preparation for, um, our meetings. And I believe that concludes the, um, superintendent's, uh, report to the committee.
Well, um, I can't read the next item on the agenda.
Why do you have your hands up? I have a quick question. Who, who does the, that's okay. You look at the agenda and I'll ask the quick question. Does, um, who does the budget book? Who is in charge of the budget book?
So we have, we have a team, but Cheryl and Nancy Bissett take the lead role in organizing and creating the, the PDF.
That's great. Kudos to them. Alright, I'm done. Roger.
Alright, well, thanks for, uh, I guess it was really there. I just didn't see it. Um, educational policy. Uh, there is none at this time unless I'm wrong about that. Policy development and or distribution. I don't see any at this time personnel items.
So in your report is the personnel, um, report for March ninth, twenty twenty-two, and I'll just highlight, um, one resignation, and that is Mark DiStefano, who is a longtime grade seven, uh, social studies teacher at Trattier, who, um, has took a leave of absence last year and is assistant principal, Keith, I believe in Concord Public Schools.
Uh, Belmont, I believe.
Belmont.
Or Bedford.
But, so he's a assistant, assistant principal, not in our district, um, and has decided he is enjoying the work and, um, has resigned from his history and social science position. So I just wanted to point that out.
Alright. Next is communications.
So just a quick update on communication. So, um, Stephanie Reinhorn, uh, not Stephanie Reinhorn, Julie Doyle. Um, I'm looking at Stephanie Reinhorn. Julie Doyle and Jen Tracy are working on, um, creating a, an updated version of our web, um, website. So they are, um, engaging folks in a process, a design process, and, um, we will be launching a new branded website on August first of this upcoming year. Um, and there's much work to do, so we'll keep the committee updated and posted. And, and the goal is to, to make it more user-friendly, uh, more interactive and highlight the great things that are happening in our district. Um, also, just in terms of communication, so Cheryl Lepry and I have been meeting with marketing firms. Um, we've met with, uh, four marketing firms at this point, just to talk about how they can support communications in our district. We're looking at potentially partnering with two different firms. Um, one firm, um, is out of Boston, uh, the former communications director out of the Boston Public Schools. Um, we're going to do some consulting work with him around communications and training and, and coherence of messaging. And then another firm, we're considering, um, having that firm conduct a communication audit to see what works well in terms of our communication and how we can improve. And the Boston marketing firm doesn't do communication audits, so we are going in two different directions. But I will share more information in future meetings about that work moving forward, but just wanted to give a brief update.
Alright, Kim?
Can I ask a quick question, Greg, about that? Um, that's great. It sounds great. I'm wondering, do you sort of have like, uh, a plan for when you'd like to do some of this work? Like, are you like before next school year or the actual next school year?
Yeah, so the, the communication audit is going to take some more time. So, um, you know, I would, you know, I would imagine that's probably a two to three month process. The Boston consultant, we hope to contract with Chris Haran, who's, who is, um, is, um, he is a small marketing firm and we hope to partner with him, um, in the upcoming months, you know, either May or June.
He's the, um, presenter that presented at the MASC conference, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's great.
Alright, um, next is action on the minutes. We have two minutes to approve two meetings. One is the special open meeting minutes of January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and the other is the, um, minutes of the open meeting of February ninth, twenty-two. I'm gonna entertain a motion, uh, I'm gonna do both of these at the same time. And if there's any discussion and you want to break them apart at that point, then there's be time to do that. So I'll attend, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Southboro School Committee Special Open Meeting virtual meeting minutes for Thursday, January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at seven thirty P M. And the Southboro School Committee Open Meeting, virtual meeting minutes for Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M. Is there a so moved on that?
So moved, Kamali?
Moved by Kamali. Uh, is there a second?
Second by Kim. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Second by Kim.
Seconded by Kim. Is there any discussion? Does anybody have any changes they were, they felt they needed to meet on either of those meetings?
I would just like to point out that it's beautiful, the first set of, um, minutes done by your secretary of the committee um, with a lot of help from Cheryl.
Well, you know, something. So, uh, hear, hear to that.
Yes.
And we'll just focus on the, uh, the, the part that's prepared by, uh, the secretary as opposed to Cheryl, but recognize that she contributed significantly to it.
Yes, exactly.
Fair enough. Alright, uh, roll call vote. Katara?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Uh, Jen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that passes unanimously. Now I'm concerned, uh, there was an, there was an agenda. Well, there was, let's say there's something we need to discuss, although it's not necessarily, uh, an agenda item by itself. And that really relates to, um, moving the meetings from virtual to in-person or not. Uh, and when we, first of all, as to, as to doing that, the pros and cons, and also if so, when? So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna open this up, uh, to any committee member. I'm looking for hands to, uh, Jen, I see your hand up. So you're first. There are pros, there are definitely pros and cons to this, and I recognize those. Sorry, Jen, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I personally feel like we should probably, that we should go back in person, but I, I have a, a couple of questions really related to that. If we do go back in person, is there a limit on number of audience members who can attend? And I know, you know, we've had a lot better participation since we've been virtual. Uh, is there a way for us to do both, have us meet in person and also stream the meeting for people who can, to attend virtually?
Greg, you want to take that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can investigate. I, I will share, um, yeah, just the technical setup and trying to manage it can be challenging. Um,
Well, here's what I don't think we can do. So I think if, Jen, if you're suggesting that there would be audience sharing possibly from virtual attendees if we're meeting in person, I think the answer to that is no. I think if you want to make a public comment and we've moved the meetings to in-person, you would need to be there in person, uh, to make that public comment. I'd like a, I'd like to, Greg, are we, um, when we were in person, like, I can't, my memory doesn't work that far back. Were we live streaming those meetings and those, or, or we, or we, uh, or we, we, um, videoing the meetings and then it was broadcast later? I know. I know it is broadcast later anyway, or, or both, or at different times. I don't recall.
I believe they were livestreamed through Sam.
Is that the, and is that what we, is that what we would anticipate doing for in-person meetings this time, when, when we, when and if we moved in person?
Yeah, we would go back to our normal setup and routine.
Livestream, all right. Jen, anything else on that, or did that help?
No, I, I think that helped. I, I mean, I guess, you know, it's definitely more convenient for me to attend when these are virtual. But I think that there is truth to what some of the community members have said is that, you know, we voted to take away the mask mandate, we've like saying that it's safe to be, which it is, it's safe to be in schools. I think that we need to kind of act accordingly and have our meetings in person if we're suggesting that things are returning to normal. But I, I'm also mindful of the fact that we've had much more participation since we've been virtual.
I, I, well, I'll, I'll, I have a comment at the end anyway. So, Kim, you're, you're up next.
Okay, so I agree, we, I think we should absolutely be back in person as soon as possible. Um, I do think that we'll have some interest in, in sort of asking for a virtual way to participate, but I am comfortable with a live streaming option like it was before. So the live streaming option, is it through the internet or through cable TV or both? Like, where was the live?
It was through cable, I think. Am I correct, Greg? Through Sam?
Keith.
I, I think it's livestreamed through their YouTube channel.
Right.
Okay, so I think that is a good option. And then we always have, then folks always have the option to email us, right? Before, after, during the meeting. And so I think that's like a good.
Well, I don't think that emailing, I don't think anyone should expect the.
Well, no response, but you can send the email whenever you want, right?
Yes, but I mean, but you're not, if, if you're looking for anybody to actually understand it or read it, it won't happen during the meeting.
Right, and also though, a lot of the public comment, we're not react, I think we can't react to it anyway, so.
That's, that's, that's correct.
Um, yeah, so I, for Jen, the same reasons that Jen said, I think we should go back soon.
Katara?
Um, so I, I totally, I one hundred percent feel that we should go back to in-person. I, you know, it's partly, I guess, because of the, the whole mess thing. But I, I think aside from it being, you know, aside from that aspect, I, I just miss seeing people. I just think it's nice to be in person. I think you get a level of communication that you just don't get over Zoom. I mean, we're so used to Zoom now that we've, we've adapted. And I think we've done a great job adapting. But there's a, there's a type of conversation that happens in person that just doesn't happen over Zoom. And now that it's safe to do it, I, I, I think we should do it. And I, you know, I would be, you know, if we're, if we're looking at, I, I, I think it's probably not practical to have public comment. But one thing we should probably be clear on heading back to this is remote participation by members, if that's ever possible. I think that there were times, and I, this was during the pandemic when we were kind of, I, I can't remember exactly why we were doing this, but there were some members that were, we had a big combined meeting and there were some members that were participating remotely and there were all these volume problems. And it was, it was really difficult. So I don't know if, just, I, I think we should just pre-think through if we get requests for remote participation. Maybe I would be somebody who would ask that someday, I'm not saying, you know, everybody could kind of find themselves in a position where they might, you know, want to participate remotely. And we should just kind of, I guess, lay out what the rules will be for that if that comes up. But I'm, I'm all for getting back to in-person.
Molly?
I, everything Katara said, I'll, I agree with them. That's the summary of where I was going.
So a couple of comments. I'm actually, and, and I, I think based on the, what I've heard is the will of the committee, I think that we, I think we should, we should move the, well, I think we should have the, the April meeting in person. So I'm not sure whether we even have to vote that, but I think that, I, I think when, when we, when we, I guess, I guess when, when I post the meeting, I can post it in person. But I, I will say that I understand the dynamic of, at least, at least what occurred for a while. Gee, if you're saying it's safe for kids to be in school, if you're saying it's safe for, for people not to wear masks, then you should show us, school committee, that you will meet in person. I'm, I'm not really persuaded by that argument. I think that argument was okay for a while, but I actually believe we've moved past that. Now, I'm not, I'm not arguing against some of the other, some of the other positions for it, but I, I personally am not persuaded by that anymore. And it is, it certainly has, you know, one of the things about technology and the fact that we were, and, and how it moves forward and how even in, in private industry, now that people can go back to do things in person, there are still a lot of things that are done remotely because technology is just, it is improved so much. Now, part of it was forced on us, right, by COVID? So sometimes good things happen for the wrong reasons. But I, I find these meetings to be very effective and it is, I think especially enables, yeah, I don't look, I don't think it's going to be very likely, although I'm not sure what the, what the, what the mask laws are now, whether you're required to have people participate remotely if you can or not, as far as committee members. But I'm, I don't think it's likely that, that remote participation is going to be too easily accomplished, just because it's unwieldy. Technology moved along, but the whole issue of trying to deal with where somebody's dialing in from and, you know, the volume issues, et cetera, I think that's hard to manage. I think from a standpoint of, but not just the school committee. I'm talking about the district staff. Now, you know, I'm extending, well, I guess my, my little speech here is extending this meeting to now almost be three and a half hours. And some people have to drive a long distance to get home. They don't live in Southborough, as far as folks that are in the district. And, you know, we've been, we've been releasing the requirement for, say, the principals, who have a lot to do the next day, early, from these meetings, early, I'm, I'm not sure how that would work out in a, in an in-person meeting. And I, I think the, I think the importance of public involvements. I know the public comment, you know, I mean, and, and then I know that we've had a lot of public comment on things that were controversial and not so much when they aren't controversial. But I think the, the importance of, of that, I think, is still, still can't be, it can't be overstated. So just, just a few, you know, I'm just, just making, I'm kind of making a few arguments for at least remote at times. Has nothing to do with how we'll post the, the, the April meeting. But I wonder, Greg, I'm, I'm very curious. If we did a survey of the community, and I know how, I, I know how that survey might have come out before, but if we did a survey of the community after we meet in person for a meeting or so, I wonder if it's poss, how, how easy is it to do a survey, to ask the community, how do you feel about, now that we're back in person? How do you feel about these meetings being in person? Or how do you feel about versus remotely? I wonder if that's something we could ask, you know, I'm very curious about that.
No, I just, yeah, we could survey folks. I think my, my comment was going to be, I think it's important to make sure it's clear the why, why you're having either in-person meetings or remote meetings. There was a reason why we had to move to remote meetings. Now, I think the question is why, you know, what is the will of the community? The community might prefer, and I have no data to support this, prefer one over the other.
I agree.
I think asking would give the committees some real good data around a meeting format. Again, what makes meetings most accessible to people? And again, I think over the past two years, I think you've had far greater participation than since my, in my tenure. So it's just, I think asking the, the community and being clear around the why is important.
I, I would agree, so I would, I would like to, you know, we can talk about how to get that done, okay? And probably, you know, whether or not, I think we need to have an in-person meeting before we ask folks how, how they feel, now that they're, now that they'd be back to experiencing. I know that Northborough, I think, does meet in person. I don't know, I haven't talked to the chair there about what the experience has been about community participation, you know, as a result of that. But I, I think, I think, I think there's, I think there's a lot to consider here. However, we'll post, I'll post the meeting for April in person. Unless there are objections, and I see that there's still a couple more hands up, so back to Kim.
Um, I was just going to say that I am definitely open. I don't think we should say like, we're going to meet in person forever, like definitely open to that option, right? But I also think that, just to amplify what Katara said about the like energy of being in person as far as the work, like considering like this is like, like this is our time to do the work, right? And that I don't think you can discount like completely. Um, but I think also I like the survey idea.
Can you, I, I, I didn't, I'm not sure I quite got it, can you talk?
Okay, so this, like these meetings, these meetings are the, are meetings to do the work, right? And to Katara's point about like there being a different energy in person, I think she's right, right? If we think back to that, I think the last time we've been in person was the combined, like last June, and like the difference, like of that, the feeling of that. So I do think it's important to consider the public comment, but there are other ways we can get that. And like, we're here to do the work at this meeting, so we should do it in a way that we do it best. I guess that's just my comment. And the, we should be ready, if we do ask, we should be ready that there are probably ways that we can do both, right? We can have an in-person meeting with remote participation. Like, it's not something that we're doing, but it probably exists, right? So I think we should be ready for that before we ask. That's it.
Before we ask?
Before we, before we do a survey that says A or B, that there is, there is some sort of hybrid answer. I think that's the first thing we're going to get back from like a group of people.
Well, if we, if we get, if we get that back, I would think we'd want to know about that and not necessarily prevent that from coming back. And I, you know, I mean, this is not, you know.
No, I think that we should, how, like, we should be sort of like educated about that, like we should put out, we should sort of, we should just do a little bit of research before we put it out, I guess, is my thought.
Okay. Jen?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with that. I think that I've been getting a lot of feedback from the community about this issue. And so I agree, you know, that there should be a good rationale for why we're one way or another. And it's not that we're just going to switch because, because of the like appearance, right? But I do think that that has, you know, we're, we're getting so much feedback from the, at least I am, from the community about why you're doing that. And to Kim's point too, is that the response, when we've tried to like provide information about why we're doing this, is often, well, why can't you then do both? So you know, this idea of the concern, I think we need to consider that when we're asking patients. I will also say that I do, you know, to Katara's point, it is very different meeting in person. And even in this meet, so I'm on Zooms, like I work remotely half-time still, and I'm on Zoom most of the day. I turn my camera off, I get coffee, I do these, and so like, it's potentially like, I could be distracted. And I think like being in person and having the community see all of the like verbals and non-verbals is important in some ways. And for us to, as committee members, to see that is a different experience than being on camera.
I agree. And, and Greg, are we, one of the things that came up, I see, I'll, I'll get to some more hands. One of the things that came up on these webinars, well, I guess that's not true with a live YouTube feed. With a live YouTube feed, you basically, the, the camera sees the, the entire committee table, right? Or not just the committee table, but the committee and, committee and district members and things like that. The camera swings around, but, but sees more than just one person, right? Right, however, on these Zoom webinars, is, is it only the speaker that shows up?
That's a setting, so it could be, you could set the gallery view, which is
Okay.
what it is now.
How are they set? For example, how is this meeting set, do you know?
This is a gallery view.
Great, okay. Jen, your hand is still up, you, is there more?
I, I guess I just follow up with like, it would be interesting to hear too, from the district personnel and staff, some of the concerns and barriers, because I know, you know, if you guys are leaving earlier and then having to come back on site or stay late, particularly for some of those late, you know, we've had meetings that, what, have gone until like one, twelve, one?
Well, those are pretty unusual, but I thought you were going to say ten o'clock, is what I thought you were going to say.
Well, yeah. Those used to be bad, right? But now it's, the bar is changed. But, you know, so are there convenience issues that would be helpful for us to know from a district staff perspective?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think, you know, my first response is, you know, we are employees of the community in town and, you know, we, this is what we sign up to do. But with that said, you know, there's ways to structure an in-person agenda so that, you know, people with longer commutes can say their, their reports and, and move on. They don't need to sit through the entire meeting. So I think, I think there's, again, ways we can accommodate some people with longer commutes.
Katara, oops, I'm sorry.
No, I'll just say that timing of the year too comes into play when you might have more virtual meetings, you know, during the winter months, for example, when weather might be a problem, so. But I don't think, I personally, I agree with Katara that I, I, it's a different feeling being in person. I think meetings are more efficient, efficient in person. But that's just my personal preference.
That, that's interesting. Well, maybe another discussion on that, but more efficient in person. Katara?
Yeah, so I, I was just going to agree with the idea of exploring if there is a way to set it up to at least allow public comment, which I think is much different from having a remote participant during the entire meeting where it's, you know, oh, they're raising their hand, oh, they want to say something, oh, they're asking. You know, like that gets very complicated, but if it's kind of like, you know, we're, we're streaming live on YouTube and, and really, when, when we have an audience, ninety-nine percent of people are just watching, right? So if there's, if there is an opportunity or a way to just sort of easily let people virtually raise their hand during public comments, say what they want to say to the committee, that, that would kind of take care of that aspect of things. I, and, and, you know, if we were in person, I personally would still be fine with, let's say, you know, we have a short five-minute break at some point after the principals give their reports and, you know, we allow them to, you kind of do the same thing. I think it's a wonderful idea to let that. You can kind of do the same thing. I think it's a wonderful idea to let them, you know, when we, when, um. We first started doing this, I, I thought it was great that they don't have to kind of sit through the rest of it and can get back to. You know, what they need to do to, um, make what they do successful. Um, so, yeah, so I, I mean, this is much more convenient. Zoom is so convenient, and it's much less convenient to go in person. Trust me, I like, this has been so easy from, in so many ways, but, um. But, yeah, I, I still think that meeting in person, the benefits, um, outweigh the convenience for me, anyway. So, that's all.
And in some, in some cases, it actually allows committee members to simply, um, be at the meeting. Because people do travel off and on, okay, so, um, um, Kamali?
Um, as long as it's not, um, breaking any rules by, um, MASC or. You know, um, and for, for, for us to go virtual for the, in the beginning of twenty twenty, like the governor had to, you know, put forward a. A change, as long as we're not breaking any rules, I think there should be, um. Um, conditional, um, meetings that can be virtual. If there's only three days notice, four days notice before I say a special school committee meeting, that may be. Uh, you know, a, a long discussion. I think you just suggest, you know, you put the invite out and you say this meeting will be remote due to X, Y, and Z. And then, um, you know, there's also another benefit, which is weather-related, to say. We don't need to cancel or delay the meeting because of road conditions. We're going to have it, but we'll have it virtually, right? Um, so I think that there's, um, having the option of conditionally, as long as there's notice. Making that, uh, meeting virtual, I think that would be something that. People can logically understand why we're having it that way. And that for the majority of them, they would be in person.
Yeah, I, I actually agree with your comment about. Um, at least holding, holding on to, um. Um, the possibility that you might. It might be, there might be conditions that would be better served by a virtual meeting, but you mentioned something interesting. Which is. Um, I don't know that, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be back to sort of public meeting law and the, the, the governor, I guess. Um, I don't know when and if, uh, it could be just against, uh. Their regulations to hold a virtual meeting period for any reason, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. So that remains to be seen. Uh, because we certainly couldn't do that before COVID, as far as I know. Uh, that came into play as a result of COVID. Now, again, sometimes good things happen for bad reasons, but, uh. Any other, uh, so let's, let's move on. Is there any other, uh, discussion on this? For now, okay, so we'll post April's meeting in person. Uh, I'm going to, I, what I would do is I would actually go to public comments, but there are no attendees left. So, uh. Uh, and that, and we're at a virtual meeting, so, you know, it doesn't take much to, to. Stay, stay, stay in the Zoom meeting while you have a cup of coffee, but, uh. Um, so seeing no hands raised from the no attendees that are left. Uh, I would, uh, ask about, um, let's see, did we talk about? Did we, I probably did that out of order, so I could still do it again. Uh, did we want to talk about, uh, next month's meeting, uh, and topics for next month's meeting quickly? Kim?
I have a quick question, um, Greg, do you plan on having, um, Jennifer Lipton O'Connell come talk to us or?
Yeah, so next, so next month, um, I was going to have, um. Jennifer come and speak, um, Stephanie, that was our plan, right?
Correct.
And then, um, an update on PD, update on PD.
Yep.
Uh, we've got, you know, school, whoo. So I'm looking at the agenda for next month, and it says school choice, public hearing and vote. Are we voting next month? Or are we just having the discussion and voting in May?
Uh, we can, it's, it's really the will of the committee, but, um, my thinking was. Discussion in April, vote in May.
That's what I was thinking, so, uh, just looking at the, you know, okay, so anything else that we know of on the agenda? Other than the things we're going to be rolling forward that we've already talked about tonight? Jen?
Could we get an update on the start tie or how it's been going with the start time changes? It doesn't have to be next meeting, it can be, I just wondering if there's one coming up.
Yeah, just a quick note, um, we're working with, um, a transportation analysis company doing an analysis. We're thinking in May, we should present the findings and the plan for next year.
Great, thank you.
All wrapped in one. All right. Um. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Katara, seconded by?
Kamali.
Kamali. Uh, this, this is not for discussion, so we'll take a roll call vote, uh, Katara?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Thanks a whole lot, everybody, uh, it is ten oh eight PM, and we are adjourned.